Started the committee, the whole meeting for Tuesday, December 10th. First item on our agenda is roll call.
Raza.
Here.
Lancy.
Here.
Beck.
Here.
Malone.
Here.
Sulfah.
Wolf.
Here.
Baron.
Here.
Lehman.
Ayazi.
Malay.
Here.
Ure. Suron. Vogelsinger. That's seven.
We have seven out of 14, which is not a quorum, so we will not be making any decisions until we have an eighth here. At this point, we're just going to go through the basic things that are on the agenda, and then we'll jump back to the stuff we'll have to vote on. So, item number two is a reminder, please speak directly into the microphone. If you come up front, you'll see the green light come on when you're on the microphone, so that we know that you can be heard. Skip the approval of minutes. We do have items to change on the agenda tonight. We do need to add on executive session personnel, as well as collective bargaining. So, that will add on there. And then we'll move to item number five, which is matters from the public. Is anybody here for anything that's not on the agenda tonight? Okay. It's easy. We'll bypass the consent agenda and head down to item seven, which is presentation on lead service line replacement project, year two update. Welcome, Emily.
Hi. I might need a reminder how to get to the presentation.
Stop share first, and then...
Then share.
Yeah.
There it is.
Perfect.
And then, can I go into presentation mode on this?
Yes.
Okay. There we go. Hi, everyone. For those who don't know me, I'm Emily Conti. I'm a project engineer with EEI, and I've been helping with the city's lead and galvanized water service line replacement program. We're now in year two, so I'll be giving a brief update on how that's going. So, as a general reminder of the year two program, this is Batavia's second large-scale planned lead service line replacement program. Year one was a huge success, and this year is using loan funding from the IEP A up to a total of $4.5 million. The original allocation was a little over $2 million, but the city was very persistent in obtaining the bypass funding, which was another good success there. So, now we're at the $4.5 million total, which is anticipated to get us about 350 to 400 lead service line replacements. General reminder on the scope of work. So, this covers three different types of replacements. So, partial from the main to the B box, or the general property line. The partial would be from B box to meter. So, general property line to inside the home at the water meter connection, or a full replacement all the way from the water main into the home at the water meter. And then, a note here, this project is only replacing portions of the services that are lead, galvanized steel, or material downstream of lead. So, construction overview, this project was awarded to Five Star Energy Services for just under $4 million. The notice to proceed was dated August of this past year, and to date, the contractor has been replacing about one to three services per day, varies based on the type of service that they're doing. If it's a full versus the partials, they can generally do a couple more of those per day. And then, our final completion is set for August of 2025. But again, this could be sooner, just based on how they progress through these. And then, the funding, I touched on this a little bit, but this is an IEP A SRF loan-funded project. This year, the loan terms are slightly different than last year, because the IEP A did change how they allocate principal forgiveness and what qualifies you for that. So, this year, it's still very advantageous. It's a 30-year loan term with 0% interest, and again, that covers up to the $4.5 million. So, a little update on construction. Work began September 17th this past year, and to date, we have 87 services completed. That's 39 full main-to-meter, 35 partial main-to-B box, 13 partial B box-to-meter. And we have over 3,800 feet of service lines replaced in the year two program, which is a little over 0.7 miles. And again, the water service is typically offline, less than four hours, so trying to minimize the impact to residents here. So, sod restoration is ongoing. Now that we're moving into the winter months, they're going to be doing temporary seed and blanket until they can come back in the spring and fully restore that with sod. And then, pavement restoration is also ongoing. All of the HMA patching for the replacements to date has been completed in early December, so there is going to be no cold patch sitting over the winter, and no additional HMA is going to be removed in these winter months. They're focusing on the private replacements from the B box-to-meter. General sequence of operations for this project. So, the contractor meets with the residents three to seven days before replacement, where they can get in the home, get their eyes on what they're working with, and answer any questions that the homeowner may have. And then, before they begin any work, all traffic and erosion control devices are put in place, and then they move into the actual installation of the service line, and then flush those lines immediately after. And then, this is followed by any HMA, concrete restoration, as well as sodding and any interior So, the city maintains a live construction data, I'm sorry, the live data collection in an ArcGIS map. This is available on the website, so residents can view this as well, and this allows the staff to track service replacements live. So, as they're going, you can see the parcels there are outlined, and if it's filled in in red, it has not yet been completed, and then it turns immediately to green as soon as they complete that replacement. So, this database also shows the locations of the new services. So, the underground connection at the main, any abandoned services, and the new B box connections, that's the little dots there. So, city staff can have a good idea of where these underground connections are, they ever needed to reference them in the future. And then, this also tracks additional data. We store photos in this, construction field reports, and all of this is made available to city staff. So, the general overview of what's going on is available to the residents, but the more detailed data collection is available to city staff. So, an overview on the lead service line replacement program, so this would be years one and year two. So, recap on funding. So, $4 million was secured, and this was 100% principal forgiveness. That was for the year one program. And then, again, year two, $4.5 million has been secured in loan funding, and this is at the 0% interest rate over 30 years. And through both of these projects, there have been no direct cost to homeowners, so that is a major success for the city and residents to be able to get these replaced. And then, moving into the replacements, we have 368 replacements to date between years one and two. So, 260 of those are full, and then, oops, 260 of those are full, 75 of those would be partial main-to-B box, 33 of those are partial B box-to-meter, and that's over 20,000 feet of service line that has been replaced in these two years, which you can see is over 3.8 miles. So, quite a lot of replacements have been going on. In terms of lead service line replacement efforts as a whole, we have over 402 replacements completed to date. 281 of those were from the lead service line year one program. Again, 87 are from year two to date, and then, the remaining 34 are replacements that's been completed by city staff. So, out of those 402 replacements, or I'm sorry, after those 402 replacements that have been completed, we're seeing around 700 lead service lines remaining in the city. And again, that number is going to go down as we progress through year two. So, the lead service line replacement program moving forward, the city staff is proceeding with aggressive inventorying efforts. So, after we complete year two, we're estimating around 450 to 500 lead service lines are going to be remaining in the city. Next year, for a year three program, there's currently $7 million allocated. That would fund the replacement of the remaining services. However, we are going to be requesting additional funding for a potential year four, to see if we can't get any more principal forgiveness to help offset some of that. And again, as mentioned previously, the city is progressing well ahead of the curve in eliminating all of these lead service lines, and that's relative to other communities of similar size, as well as the EPA mandate to begin replacements in 2027. So, very good job from city staff in getting ahead of all of this. And this slide we've seen before, but again, a huge thank you to the stakeholders for the lead service line replacement project. We appreciate all of the efforts and support to date. Year one was a huge success, and we're very excited to continue to see that grow in year two. This is just some of the feedback we've received from residents on these projects. All right. Thank you, I guess. Any questions?
Do you have any questions?
I guess I'd just like to say, you know, that I am really glad that this has progressed the way it has. I really feel like we've gotten so far out ahead of everything else I see around us, you know, and this has just gone extremely smooth. I mean, I've talked to people that have had it done. They're happy they got the notice. They're happy they get to directly talk to people that are going to be in their house or in their yard, and everything, from what I've heard, has gone excellent. You know, it's been a really smooth project.
I'd like to supplement that. Sorry I'm late, I had dead duty, dropping off a kid at soccer practice tonight. Steve Dennis, and I think a lot of you have seen me here before, and I just want to reiterate everything that Emily was saying, and Alan, as you were saying as well. This has been an incredible effort by the city staff. The diligence and the professionalism that they have shown is beyond reproach, from what I have seen. They are just extremely diligent in their preparation. These types of projects, because they're essentially little mini projects with every single address that they're doing, there are so many things that could go wrong, and because they have planned meticulously and gone through the necessary steps in advance and communicated so effectively with each of the residents and worked with the contractors and all the entities that are involved, it has gone incredibly smoothly. We have not seen it go as smoothly in other communities, and that's a testament to the staff and everybody who's worked on this, and kudos to the city for being proactive and allowing these projects to move forward. When you have, you've certainly, like you said, been ahead of the curve with local communities here, and you're in very good position to have all your lead service lines replaced expeditiously and way ahead of schedule, so.
I'm just curious, what happens to the lead lines after we take them out?
They're abandoned in place in the ground, and there's been discussion about that. There's no significant health issues related to abandoning the lead services in the ground. The water is no longer flowing through that. That's the major health issue. Thank you.
Is there one online? I see a hand.
Mark. Go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, I mean, sorry. Thank you for everything that everybody's done on this. This is, in general, been a very successful project over the past few years, and I appreciate all the effort. I know Jeremy is aware of at least one resident on the east side that did have an issue with the contractor. I just want to make sure that we are cognizant of privacy with residents, because there was a resident on the east side that a contractor kind of like peeked in the window and knocked on the window instead of knocking on the door or ringing the doorbell, and it was kind of an issue for that resident that had reached out to me. So, just making sure that we are paying attention to expectations of residents to treat them with respect and make sure that we are reaching out to residents in not windows, but doorbells and knocking on the door. So, just keep that in mind, that we do need to make sure that we are always paying attention to what we should be doing when we reach out to residents at those times.
I completely agree. I appreciate you bringing that up. That's the first that we're hearing about it, and we definitely are going to bring that up to the contractor to make sure that they, that's not a typical procedure that they would be doing, but it's always good to get a reminder, absolutely, they should not be doing that. So, we will pass that news along. In fact, we have a progress meeting with them on Thursday, so it'll be a good opportunity to review that again with them.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And I know it's on the, it's the rarity, it's the 1%, right? And we need to be paying attention to all 100%, not just 99%. So, that's all that was about, was one person that reached out to me about that.
Yeah, appreciate that.
So, I appreciate it.
Yeah, and any other feedback that folks get from the constituents, please pass it along. We want to hear about it, good or bad.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, we'll move back to the consent agenda, and in Beck's absence, I'll just go ahead through and read those. Approval would be ordinance 2024-074, amending the municipal code relating to sanitary sewer usage rates. Item B would be ordinance 2024-075, amending the municipal code relating to water usage rates. Item C, resolution 2024-154R, approving contract with Aurora Sign Company for the city entrance signs. And item D, resolution 2024-153R, approving task number 10 with ERA consultant for construction engineering services related to Fox River stabilization project in an amount not to exceed $58,300. I will make the motion to approve the consent agenda as read. Motion by Wolf. Second by Sulfah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And that would be nine of us. All right, then we'll move on to item number eight, which would be public hearings anytime after 7:05. So, we'll open the public hearing on annexation agreement for 02-South 735 South Red Ant Road, annexation agreement 02-7, South 799 South Red Ant Road, annexation agreement for 02-South 912 Wagner Road, and annexation agreement 02-South 950 Wagner Road.
Yes, thank you. These are four annexation agreements in one of the surrounded areas that we've negotiated with each of these individual property owners, so there's actually four separate hearings. We'll conduct them all at the same time, but, so each of them has signed an annexation agreement with the city. They all have similar terms in regards to zoning, in regards to grandfathering existing uses, whether it be setbacks, or animals, or businesses that may be on the property. If it was legal in the county, we grandfather it through the annexation agreement, you know, and define it specifically in there. So, it protects the property owner as well as the city. It also, you know, lets them know the parameters for utilities, that if they wish to connect, they can. They don't have to, by the agreement, as long as their systems are working fine, they can continue to, you know, be unwell and septic in combat, you know, situations. So, there's four different ordinances here, and, you know, this would be the opportunity for anybody to speak regarding the agreements.
Is there anybody from the public that would like to address us on any of these agreements? And no comments online, so we can close the public hearing. Can I get a second on a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion by Wolf. Second by Sulfah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. No, we did not. Before we move on to the rest of the ordinances, I need to go back and approve the minutes for November 26, 2024. Can I get a motion?
I'll move.
Motion by Sulfah, second.
Second.
By Malay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Now, we will move on to item number nine, which is ordinance 2024-077, authorizing execution of an annexation agreement between Mark and Susan Valkansik and the City of Batavia for property located at 02-South 735 South Red Ant Road. Scott?
This is the annexation agreements that were for the happened annexation agreement in public hearings. So, this is one of the annexations on Red Ant Road. So, this covers the annexation as well as the zoning, and again, all these annexation agreements are very similar in nature, slightly different each, but they cover pretty much the same matters in each agreement.
Anybody have any questions on this one? It's nice to have annexation agreements that aren't controversial. I'll make the motion that we approve ordinance 2024-77.
Second.
Motion by Wolf. Second by Malay. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? We need them. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Now, we'll move on to item 10, which is ordinance 2024-078, authorizing execution of an annexation agreement between Richard C. Saul and Holly Saul of the Saul Trust and the City of Batavia for property located at 02-South 799 South Red Ant Road. Any questions, comments? Make the motion that we approve ordinance 2024-78.
Second.
Motion by Wolf. Second by Malay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. On to ordinance 2024-079, authorizing execution of an annexation agreement between Thomas E. and Joanne C. Zilman and the City of Batavia for property located at 02-South 912 Wagner Road. Any comments, any questions? I'll make the motion that we approve, or send a council recommendation, yes, on ordinance 2024-079.
Second.
Motion by Wolf. Second by Malay. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. And the last one, ordinance 2024-80, authorizing execution of an annexation agreement between Andrew and Tracy Brier and the City of Batavia for property located at 02-South 950 Wagner Road. Okay. I'll make the motion that we approve ordinance 2024-080.
Second.
Motion by Wolf. Second by Malay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Just one other follow-up on that. Once these agreements are approved, we have several other properties that are also voluntary annexations that we received that weren't subject to agreements, so all of those will be coming forward to you as one group in January.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
All right, now we'll move on to item 13, which is presentation on the 2024 Batavia Fire Department Staffing Study.
Yeah, it's saved on the bottom. Oh, can you do stop share? I'm just going to get the presentation up there and share it with, so that Mark can see it.
All right, super. Laura, do you want to make any introductory comments?
Well, just to say, this is Craig Heck from McGrath Consulting, and over the course of the year, Craig has worked with the fire department, looking at our current staffing levels, as well as a number of other statistics and demographics, and looking forward for about the next 10-year period of what our expected future growth is. And tonight, Craig is here to present to us the results of the staffing study. Thank you, Craig.
Thank you. Well, I appreciate the opportunity to be back in front of this board and to do work for Batavia again. The information that we have tonight is to look specifically at staffing, and as Laura indicated, to try and make some analysis as it relates to your current needs, as well as future. So, I'll take you through the methodology and some of the numbers, and try and help you understand exactly what it is that we're looking at. So, as we started work on this project, really, our focus was in two key areas. The first was to evaluate the current staffing levels related to service delivery needs. So, we looked at a number of things there. We looked at call volume. Quite frankly, call volume drives most of what it is that we do, so we always start there. We looked at the number of staff fire companies that you have, in essence, the number of fire companies that you have to handle the call volume. You guys have two all the time, occasionally three, so you staff two engine companies in your squad on occasion. We looked at the effectiveness of your POC or your part-time program. We looked at things that are impacting staffing levels, and we tried to look at that not only from things that are impacting staffing levels within the City of Batavia, but also on a national level, since those are ultimately going to affect and lay out some trends that we're seeing. We looked at automatic and mutual aid response. We looked at cost of additional staff, and we looked at shift supervision. So, if you think of it in blocks, that's the first block that we looked at. The second block we tried to analyze was the future staffing needs based on projection of community growth. I will say to you, I feel really quite good about the analysis on the first block of information. The second block, it's in many ways looking at a crystal ball, and sometimes my crystal ball gets kind of fuzzy as we try to project out more and more and more, but I'll try and give you some pictures of what it is that we think we're seeing based on what you've currently got going on, and then we were able to pull some pretty nice data off of the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning that helped us be able to produce some projections. But it's only fair to say, the first block, I think we're there. The second block, eh, it's, my confidence level isn't nearly as good on that second block, but we'll share with what you got. In this project, we really focused in two very specific areas. One, we did a number of interviews. Obviously, we want to talk to the staff. They know what is taking place. They know what's going on. They see the call volume day in and day out, and they're going to be able to provide and share good information for us. So, I appreciate the interviews and the clarity of information that we were able to get. The second aspect of that is the data analysis aspect, and when we're doing a project like this, the data really drives an awful lot of the work that we're doing. If I hear a story in an interview, I want to be able to back that up with data analysis to actually say, hey, that's good information, that's accurate, and we can use that as a foundation, or whether we need to figure out that we're missing something as it relates to that. In our overall data analysis, we looked at the past three years. We utilized your firehouse system, as well as your ESO system, which are your two data management systems that you guys have operated off of. We were also able to pull some really good information from Tricom Dispatch. And then, I tried to compare your information against national standards. So, we looked at your incident reporting, that your comparison as it relates to numbers from the national level. We looked at ISO, and you guys know ISO well in this community. We looked at your NFPA standards as it relates to staffing in response to fires, and then we looked at some information coming out of American Heart Association, because we wanted to understand chain of survival and response times, and the impact of being able to get folks on the scene in appropriate levels. So, those were the areas that I focused my work on. I will say, as I stand here, this community has done a tremendous job over a very long time in being able to, what I'm terming it as, right-size your fire department. You don't have, you're not in a situation where you're overstaffed, where you have too many folks coming to work every day, but you certainly are not in a position in which... You're not in a situation where you're overstaffed, where you have too many folks coming to work which you've got great and tremendous needs. You have some needs as we're starting to see changes in call volume, but you have been right-sized for a very long time. And I think that is some diligent action by leadership that has really focused attention on trying to do that. The combination model that you've utilized, full-time with your part-time or your paid-on-call, has served this community really well. And obviously, you're an ISO Class 1 department. If it hadn't served the community well, you wouldn't have that rating. So I think that is a huge credit to this community. And I think also, the Tri-City ambulance service has been very cost-effective model to be able to let you provide good quality ambulance service when you've got first responders that are coming in off of the fire companies. Quite frankly, this flat equates to strong financial stewardship of the taxpayer dollars. And you've been very, very good at that. And it was very evident as we were looking at your numbers. Now, let's jump into some of the data and where we're at. I think the first thing that we need to make sure that we understand, when we talk about staffing in the fire department, if things have been really, really good for a long time, why are we spending any time talking about staffing as it relates to today? Well, the challenge that I think is really important for you to understand is that, on a national level, we're seeing a significant drop in folks that are interested in being in the fire and emergency services. Doesn't matter if you're full-time, if you're part-time, if you're a volunteer. Across the board, I hear day in and day out from fire departments across the country, and also into Canada, they can't get personnel. They can't get folks that are interested to come work for them full-time. They can't get part-timers. They can't get volunteers. The engagement within communities seems to have dropped off. There are numbers out there that estimate 50% or more overall reduction in the overall applicant pool on a nationwide level. So when we say, well, why can't we just keep doing what it is that we're doing? Well, the problem is, is we're struggling to get full-time staff, and we're struggling to continue to get your part-time staff in the door to have them continue to do in the work that they're doing. I don't see that that's going to get better anytime in the future, but I also want to stress that, as you move forward and make changes within your overall staffing within the fire department, I want to encourage you to not move too fast. Because this may, trend may turn itself around, and all of a sudden, two, three years down the road, we're in a position where we can get those personnel. And if you've overhired today, then we're going to put ourselves in a position where you're not in the good financial scenario that you've built for a long time. So I think it's important for you to understand that this recruitment is a real challenge that we're seeing. The other thing that Batavia struggles with, just like all departments here in the Chicago metro area, is you're competing against the same candidate pool. So as you go out there to try to hire new staff, it's the same people. It's the same people that Geneva's trying to hire, that Navia's trying to hire, that Hanover Park is trying to hire, that the City of Chicago is trying to hire. Pick one of the communities in this area, we're all competing for the same market, and the pool is very, very small. So that puts us in a difficult scenario to be able to get those people. But I think it also is an opportunity for the city to think about, we, as a community, have to be the employer of choice. If we're not the, and that doesn't mean that we're going to pay the most money. In fact, a lot of departments, I think, have wrongly selected the thought process, we'll throw a bunch of money at the candidates, and we'll get them to come in the door. And the reality is, that's not the situation. You've got to have to pay a fair wage, but it's not what drives everything right now. But you need to focus that attention on, how do we become the employer of choice to get those quality folks to come work here versus someplace else? So with that in mind, let's start to break this down just a little bit and see what we uncovered. All right? So what you see on the screen is your comparison against all other fire departments in the country as it relates to how your reports are pushed in and your data compares. And as you can see, a three-year analysis there, 21, 22, 23. Over on the far side, under the national, you'll see what the percentage is there comparatively to Batavia. So I call out a couple things of interest that, when I look at these numbers from agencies across the country, when I look at Batavia numbers, I think these are interesting. One, under the fire responses, the national average for all fire response for fire departments is their total call volume is about 2.8% for how many times they're going out the door to a fire. In Batavia, you're going out the door 1.45%. So your actual structure fire responses are less than the national average. I think that lends itself to a couple different things. I think, one, you've got a community that pays attention and doesn't do things that cause fires. I would also add, you have a really pretty aggressive and high-quality fire prevention program in your organization that's been in place, and it's done a nice job in educating and doing things like sprinkler systems and alarms and managing those things. So overall, your fire loss is low, and that's very admirable. It's interesting, though, the next number that I call out there is your rescue and EMS response. Fire departments, about 71% of what they're doing is rescue or EMS. You guys are a little bit lower than that. And you're bringing in numbers at 64%, just a little bit over. That's probably because your fire department is not necessarily going to have to go on every ambulance call. So your numbers drop a little bit. And the only one that really threw me, and we've had conversations with the chief and administration, is your false alarm numbers are high, significantly high. 12% of your calls are false alarms comparatively to 5.4. And so we've had some conversations about, hey, something's going on, those alarms are activating, you're responding to them, you need to figure that out and investigate that so you can bring those unnecessary responses down. But overall, you guys, you look pretty good as it compares across the board, and I'm super impressed with that low fire number. Now, let's look at your call volume for just a second. Call volume drives the number of fire companies that you need to have. That's just what it boils down to. And your call volume is going up. And you can see the graph there, and I put a trend line in consistently over the years, your call volume continues to go up. When we're looking at call volume and increasing call volume and the comparison of how many personnel do you have to respond on calls, we spend a lot of time looking really at three particular areas. We're looking at what we call overlapping calls, which means, when do you have calls that are occurring on top of each other? So I'm going to show you a chart in just a second that'll speak to overlapping calls. We looked at reliability of your callback personnel, what you guys have really operated on for a very long time. When you get really, really busy, your folks come back. And when they come back, they're able to staff additional equipment and get them on the street and handle calls. So we said, we need to figure out, is that still a viable solution for the City of Batavia? And then we want to look at this, what in the industry we typically refer to as Level Zero. It means you're out of companies, you're out of equipment. And in the Chicago metro area, when you run out, you rely on the neighbors to respond. And so how often are you out of companies based on your actual call volume? So let's take a look and see where we're at. So you can see in this chart, I've got the three years we've been talking about, 21, 22, 23. And I put some red lines in there, because I think it's important to understand where you're at as it relates to companies. So the way you operate right now, you've got two engine companies, three personnel on those engine companies, and they're running all the time, 24/7, those two engine companies are operating. And you also run a squad, a little response truck. I like it. I think it's effective, it does good work. But that little squad gets shut down when you don't have enough staff on duty to be able to keep it in service. So to say, how many companies do you really have? Well, it depends. Some days, you've got two. Some days, you've got three. So that's what these red lines show for you. So that dotted line up there at top is when you would just have the two engines in service. And then the red line would be when you have all three. And then anything below the red line, we're out of companies, we're at Level Zero. So what does this thing really show for us? Well, let's look at 2023 numbers. I think that's probably the easiest place to, and the most current and accurate to look at. So you have, the first call is dispatched 2,931 times, one call is dispatched, fire engine goes out the door, and the other engine company or the squad is still in service. Okay? No problem. While they're out on that first call, 1,472 times in 2023, a second call was dispatched. So now, both engine companies are out on the call, or maybe the engine and the squad is out on a call. If the squad is in service, we've still got one company left. We're okay. If both engines go out and the squad is out of service, you don't have anybody to respond. So how often did that occur? Well, in 2023, you had 406 calls that were overlapping, 406 calls that occurred simultaneously with the first call and the second call. You had 50 of the fourth call that occurred at that same time. You had nine instances where the fifth call occurred, seven instances where the sixth call occurred, and seven instances where the third call occurred. So here's what it really boils down to. When you're running with only two companies, there is 500, roughly around 480 to 500 calls that you're out of companies to respond. You don't have anybody staffing anything to handle that call. So what's going to occur? Either one of those guys, one of those engine companies that is on the call is going to say, hurry up, let's free up, let's load our stuff back up, let's run to the other call. The ambulance takes it by theirself, or you've got mutual aid coming. When I look at this, it becomes pretty evident to me, you need to do everything you can to have three companies on the street all the time. That's where your call volume is at, that's what we're showing. When we get down into these single digits, 3, 7, 9, those things are going to occur. All of us have those. It's a busy day, that stuff occurs. But when we're up in that 406 range, that tells us, you know, we need to have that other rig on the street all of the time, or at least peak time, to be able to make sure that we've got folks that are going to respond. Does that make sense? So let's continue on a little bit here. So I wanted to really dig into this, how often is that third unit staffed and available to respond? And I wanted to look at your callbacks. So here, this over here on squad staffing, as you can see, your squad is not running less than 50% of the time. And it's not running simply because there's not personnel to put on it. And that's what it boils down to. And if you look over at that bar chart I've got, I looked at, well, what is your overall callback? You know, how many people do you have, when you set the pager off and say, we're out of companies, are leaving home, leaving their jobs, and coming back to staff another piece of equipment to handle another call? You guys have been the model for making that work for many, 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 many years. The problem is, is with the declining interest that we're seeing in people being interested in joining as part-timers or paid-on-call members, you just don't have them anymore. And your numbers are dropping off substantially as it relates to folks that are available to handle those calls. So then, when I'm looking at that, I'm thinking, well, I want to know what your acuity level is. I want to know how serious are the calls that you're going to? A lot of times, we think about, as I do studies, I think about, well, do we really need to respond lights and siren to the majority of the calls that we're going to? And I would argue, when we're looking at national numbers, the answer is no. In fact, when you look at national numbers, the trend says that you don't need that quick, fast emergency response, lights and siren, traveling to get to an emergency. So I thought, well, maybe you're okay. So I wanted to look at your acuity. When I look at your acuity, the chart that you see there where it shows advanced life support and basic life support, here's what's going on in Batavia. The vast majority of your responses are advanced life support calls, which means that we're starting IVs, we're putting them on a cardiac monitor, we're giving medication. The good thing is, is in the City of Batavia, people generally are not calling for things that they don't actually need assistance for. When they call 911, they need you. So your acuity level is pretty high comparatively to what I see with other communities. So my thought of, well, maybe we're okay on having a delayed response, kind of went away when I started looking at your overall acuity level. And then I looked at, well, how often does a fire company arrive before the ambulance arrives? And as you can see, your numbers are going up. In 2023, a little over 1,300 times, a fire company was on the scene before the ambulance got on the scene. And we know from looking at some of your data, it's, the fire company is on the scene about three minutes before the ambulance shows up. So they're there just long enough to assess the patient, figure out, is this going to be an ALS call? Maybe they can get the cardiac monitor on, and then usually, the ambulance shows up. What I will say to you is that, as Tri-City ambulance continues to get busier, that length of time that you've got a fire company on the scene while you're waiting on the ambulance to show up is going to increase, which means that your folks are not going to just get the cardiac monitor on. They're going to be initiating the IVs, they're going to be initiating the medication, they're going to be working the patient in an advanced life support capacity prior to the ambulance arriving. So your acuity makes having that third company in service much, much more important than maybe what it is when I'm looking at other communities. Now, I wanted to take a look at your part-time personnel, because that is a huge part of what it is that you do. And I wanted to see where you were at as it relates to staffing levels on those numbers. Overall, your part, the number of part-time personnel, although the department has worked really, really hard to try and bring that number up and keep it up, your numbers continuing to drop as a trend. So your part-timers are just not as available as what they used to be. Now, I know you play in that world of, you get a really, really great part-timer, and then you have a full-time vacancy, and you hire them. And then they become a full-time employee for you, which is fantastic, but it leaves a hole on the part-time side of the situation. So your overall part-time numbers are going down, and I'm not sure you can replace them. So let's look at staffing just a little bit and see where those numbers are at. So your shift staffing is 10 personnel a day. That's what most of us in the fire business call, that's your max staffing. And then you'll have a minimum staffing. Your minimum staffing is seven. So you can reduce down to seven. You've got 10 on shift, but you can reduce down to seven because of leave time and sick leave and things like that. And then, on each shift, you have three spots that are set aside for coverage by your part-time personnel. So just a little over 26,000 hours are allotted for a part-timer to work. Okay? And through your union contract, your part-timers don't fill in for full-timers. That's just, some places do, some places don't. That's not neither here nor there in my mind. And then, annual leave for your full-timers accounts, someplace between 12,000 and 13,000 hours. What it all boils down to is, is the total hours that you need to cover... What it all boils down to is, is the total hours that you need to cover, either from your part-time or from leave time, is 39,000 hours. That's a pretty large number of hours for you to try and cover, either to get your part-timers to come back in, or have enough full-timers on duty to be able to cover those shifts. So when I look at your overall part-timers and how many hours they're working, remember, they need to cover 26,000 hours. In 2023, they covered 15,700. So there's a pretty significant shortage there. And if we look back to 2017 forward, what you're seeing is that your part-timers are covering less and less and less and less and less of the hours that their spots are allotted for. Not surprised based on what's going on in the recruitment area for emergency service personnel today, but that's difficult for a community to overcome. So what do you do when that happens? Well, you've got a couple of options. You can brown out a company, which is what you guys do. You shut down your squad. Or you can pay overtime. All right? And you do both, but the first step is shut down that company. And we've already talked about shutting down the company is probably a bad idea based on your call volume. So when I looked at your overtime, I wanted to know, how much of it is voluntary overtime? How much of it is mandatory overtime? How much is it, hey, I got a vacancy, you want to work today? How much of it is, you don't get to go home, you got to stay? All right? And what I'm seeing in my work across the country is that mandatory overtime is going up. Because there's enough overtime, because we're all short, there's enough overtime, folks don't want to work. They're like, I'm tired of working, I want to go home. So we're seeing mandatory overtime go up. You guys are starting to see your mandatory overtime go up. Now, one of the things that I would say, almost 100% of the time, when I start to analyze this stuff, I will see a corresponding increase in sick leave when I see an increase in overall mandatory overtime. And the reason that we see that is because people will take sick leave because they're sick, because they mentally are worn out, or you have some individuals that'll take a sick day, because that's the only way they can get off. So I looked at your numbers, and you can see the trend line lays out pretty, pretty equally there. As your mandatory overtime goes up, we're seeing a corresponding increase in your overall sick leave as well. So what's going on here is not any different than what I'm seeing in other projects that I look at across the country. And really, it becomes this vicious cycle. When you don't have enough staff, you have chronic overtime. We then have trouble with recruitment, because the folks that want to come to work here say, oh, man, I don't want to work all that overtime. So you can't get them to fill the spots, which then drives more overtime, and it becomes this vicious cycle that you run into, that it's just very difficult to wrap your arms The next thing that I want to talk about just a little bit, as I started to unpack and look at your stuff, I was looking at your supervisors. And supervisors play a critical role in both service delivery and firefighter safety. When I talk about supervisors, I don't want you to think that it's, they need to ensure that folks are being have in the firehouse. That's not what it is. You've got professionals, they're not getting in trouble, they're not doing crazy things. What it is, is when you get on the street, it's making decisions about how we're going to handle calls, how we're going to manage incidents, the right tactics that we're going to employ, and on critical scenes, being able to make decisions as it relates to, when do we need to back out and not be in the environment we're in? And that becomes that real firefighter safety issue. So right now, what you've got is you've got three officers assigned to every shift. You've got a battalion chief, which is your shift commander, and you've got two company officers, and each engine has got a company officer on it. And the squad, or if they jump over to your ladder truck, there's no officer over there, which is concerning to me in that you have a company that doesn't have a supervisor to pay attention to firefighter safety, but they're out there functioning as a fire company. And oftentimes, some of the work that the truck does, they're kind of off by themselves, which is even a more critical spot. I think if I was in your situation, I'd take an officer off of the engine, put them on the truck, or put them on the squad and run the engine with an acting officer, because of the truck, how they get separated in some of the work that they do. But here's what concerned me when I looked at things. You can have two officers off on leave time, which only leaves you with one supervisor for the entire shift. And they are probably going to be in the battalion chief car, and they're not going to be with the folks operating in the hostile environment. I think that you've got a lot of risk there, just like I think you have a lot of risk when you shut down your squad. I think you've got a lot of risk in not having an additional officer around. And I would urge the city to look at adding a supervisor, one supervisor per shift. And I'd put them over there on the squad, they can jump to your ladder truck. And you can, when you have people off on leave time, at least you'd have two supervisors instead of only one. I think you're a little weak there, and it's concerning. So as I close, what do you do with this? What's the answer? Well, you can hire to address the problem. All right? And based on your numbers, the hours you got to cover, you need 12 additional full-time folks, and that's going to cost you someplace between 2.1 and 2.2 million dollars in the first year. Here's the problem with that. Although that is probably the easy thing to do, I don't think it's the right thing to do. I think the right thing to do is to approach this from a very measured approach. All right? You need some folks, you need some additional personnel. No question, you're not going to throw any more recruitment flyers out there and be able to get any more part-timers from the community to come, it's not going to happen. They're just not there. We know that, both from this town as well as other communities across the country. But I think what you can do is you can add some firefighters, put some folks in place, and then you need to look at the data and see what change that made. If it's positive and you still have some weaknesses, well, then maybe we add some additional. But what I don't want to see you do is hire a whole bunch of additional folks without using the data to analyze the impact of the folks that you're bringing in the door, and all of a sudden, you've overhired, and then that becomes a real challenge for you as well. I think there's some opportunity for peak time unit staffing. So when I look at your peak times, you have a pretty, right there in the red circle, you've got some times a day where your call volume is coming in, and then it drops off. So do you need to bring in 24-hour folks all the time? I don't know. That's a conversation that I think leadership needs to be thinking about. Is that an option for you? I think the other opportunity is that as you put that third unit back on the street, if you can figure out how to put that third unit on the street, I think there's an opportunity to look at some non-emergency response to deal with welfare checks, slips, trips and falls, things like that, where maybe you don't need a full response, but you can go out and assist people in their homes. There are fire departments across the country that have got some non-emergency response programs in place that are doing a tremendous job in serving their residents, and there's a corresponding overall 911 response, because they're addressing it before the 911 call comes in. Here's what I would say. The Chicago metro area hasn't figured out how to do this yet. There's a lot of other parts of the country that have figured it out, and it's working really, really well, this non-emergency scenario. If the city of Batavia could figure it out, you would set the standard and be the model for the rest of the metro area. And there's an awful lot of opportunities, I think, to look at some departments that are doing some pretty innovative stuff that would work well in this community as well. So I would really encourage you to take a look at that. Let me just quickly jump over as it relates to projections. I looked at all of your healthcare facilities. You guys run a ton of calls to your healthcare facilities. In 2023, 1,256 calls to a healthcare facility. That's a lot. You've got a lot of healthcare facilities, and you're building more. So projection, what did we do here? Well, we were able to take some of your numbers, we were able to look at information we were to get from the Chicago metro folks, and we were able to get some data as it relates to your visitors. We are projecting, or I shouldn't say we, I should say, the folks that look at this stuff know this way better than what I do. The projection is, is that by 2040, your population here in Batavia will be around 52,000 people. You'll have about 300 healthcare beds, if the things come to fruition, as you've laid out. And when I applied my calculations, things like 6.5 calls per 1,000 residents, your bed count, et cetera, I believe, and my fellow consultant that worked on this with me, we think that you're going to be a little over 8,000 runs by 2040. You're at 5,000 now. So you've got some growth that we think will be taking place. What's interesting, though, is if you've got three companies running all the time, you can absorb 8,000 runs with those three companies. You can't absorb much more, but you can do 8,000 with the three that you've got in place. All right? So my recommendation, I think you've got to look at putting those three companies in place. And I think you need to, to make that happen, you're going to have to add some additional full-time folks to make it happen. And I think my best recommendation would be, as you're adding those full-time folks, some of them need to be supervisors. So that's what I bring to you.
Thank you very much, Craig. When the study was done, we were down four full-time staff and seven paid-on-call. I'm very happy to report that we have been able to fill all of those positions. So one of the things we're going to be doing on an ongoing basis is to track and provide for you what impact being fully staffed, at least, will have on the overtime that we have to work. In particular, we think that being fully staffed will help us to nearly eliminate the mandatory overtime that's happening, because that's number one thing that we definitely want to avoid. But as Craig has so eloquently laid out here, that is not going to get us where we need to be. And so in this year's budget, we originally had three firefighter positions, but due to the constraints of the current budget, we took that back to just one. While we discuss ways in which we could approach this issue of making sure that we have all three companies, and one of the, and maybe Craig, would you like to talk a little bit about the peak shift and what we're looking at there and the conversations that we're
Let's go back here behind you. It's the other Craig. We've begun some discussions, obviously through the recommendations of Craig Hague, into looking at what we could do to meet our peak demands initially with the personnel that, well, within the budget constraints and the limited personnel that we've been able to acquire at this point in time. One of them, to improve service and address, as Craig aptly pointed out in his charts and surveys, is most of our calls, 70, almost 65%, national average being 70%, are EMS calls and things. So we're looking at trying to keep that squad staffed to 100% rather than the 50% it is. Upgrade it to an ALS squad, as you noted in the chart, that the ALS are not only the more critical calls, but also are the more frequent calls. So it currently serves as a BLS company. It currently is browned out over 50% of the time. And we are hoping and working with the union in initial discussions and things that we can start out by building through a proactive stair-step model, the ability to at least staff that squad at a peak time every day during our day shift. Our day shifts run from 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM. And then night shift, which is a 13-hour shift, which runs from 6:00 PM to 7:00 AM, has more coverage frequency by our part-time people, our paid-on-call. That's due to the fact that our part-time paid-on-call, a lot of them have full-time jobs and other responsibilities. That was, you know, it was our hopes that we could hire three this year and add one per shift. That, you know, wasn't economically feasible this year. We are hiring one, which I thank you very much, which we will put initially on days, but that will only serve as a slight advantage, to be honest. It's an eight-hour day shift, and it's one person. So it takes a minimum of two on the squad per contract and design, the way it works, and three on an engine or a truck company. But we've worked with Laura, and we've got Max also working on a survey and things, and discussions with the union to see what the plausibility and support would be for at least a daytime squad within the next year, and hopefully to advance that to a 24-hour, a 7, 365 company the following year. Therefore, stair-stepping our hiring process and things, and coming back to you, obviously, with additional requests for additional personnel in the future, and designing what we've already done, a five-year kind of plan for hiring, and an overall 10- to 15-year plan, as Craig had laid out.
And so in the 2026 budget, we would be recommending the addition of two lieutenants and one firefighter.
Right, we'd be looking for an additional hire of a minimum of three personnel, like I requested this year. Of that, we would be looking to promote supervisor personnel, as Laura stated, so we'd have two and two on the squad. So the squad would have a supervisor on it at all, basically out of standard staffing when there is vacations and things. We do have acting officers and things, but it works as a developmental program for mentoring and the ability to serve in those roles to learn and enhance their skills.
And that would respond to the concerns that Craig Hague had regarding the supervisor, the number of supervisors, there being a supervisor for each piece of equipment.
But obviously, in order to promote them, I need people to backfill those positions, and that's part of that.
Questions?
Got a question about the, so it sounds like the staff truck, if I'm getting the terminology correct, is kind of a key part of our response.
The key part is staffing a third company.
Yeah.
Right. And that's true, how we get there, as Craig had pointed out, we've got double Craig's here, so we're having fun. But as we both agree, the truck is integral, especially in our firefighting task. In order to do it, we need a minimum of three on the truck. We ordered a new truck, which will have greater capabilities and ability to do that, which you guys approved at a little over $2 million. We thank you for that. And part of that is working towards that delivery and ability to run the truck at a regular basis and staff it. Until then, we use as a model, using our squad as a service delivery at that aspect, and they jump over at this point in time. So that is where we'd like to get it, that's our primary goal. But all these things, these plans, developments, take time and steps to get to those points.
You mentioned a minute ago, right now it's a BLS response, and you want to upgrade it to an ALS response.
Really, our squad is a BLS response, our truck is a non-ALS. Essentially, it's kind of a BLS.
Is that a matter of...
It's a first responder. It's a first responder.
Of the equipment that goes into it? Is it staff training? What moves it from BLS to ALS?
It's primarily, well, it does have to do staffing, because you have to have at least one paramedic on it. All, both of our engines are ALS certified, and that comes down to having a specifically trained personnel, which is a minimum of paramedic, but we also have EMTs on them. But to be an ALS, you have to have a licensed paramedic on it at all times. You also have to have ALS equipment, which basically is cardiac equipment, monitor, drugs, and supportive equipment for life, advanced life support, which has to be done through IDPH certification. So there's a licensure for the vehicle. And then it, once you've licensed it and that, you want to keep it staffed at that. Can you downgrade it? Yes. But it's very difficult to jump it back and forth, and we really, I would not support doing that. If I'm going to move it up to an advanced life support unit, I want it to be advanced life support at all times.
If I'm, just so I'm understanding this correctly, to move it up from our BLS to an ALS, we not just need staff, we need sort of particular staff who can fill that, that paramedic role and have that.
Under our, yeah, under our current policy and hiring guidelines, all full-time personnel are required to be paramedics. So they're, they're, they're minimum advanced, certified advanced firefighters and paramedics. Our part-time staff is not required to do that. That's why it's essential to add full-time staff that meets those minimum requirements of paramedics. It's a lot of work to become paramedics. We, we are fortunate that we have a progressive training program. They come in, they get certified as a paramedic, and they're immediately hired off. Now, we are fortunate enough that four of the last three that we hired actually came through our Explorer program, through the high school, up through our part-time program. We sponsored them through the paramedic program, and they initially became valuable in that. Some of them left and went to a couple other departments, but chose to come back to Batavia, their hometown, when we had the openings. But once they achieve that paramedic certification, they're as good as gold. It's hard, you know, you've got to have a place for them.
And, and keep in mind, you're, both of your engines right now are paramedic level. So they've already got the equipment supplies on them. So with, with additional staff that are coming in the door that are firefighter, paramedics, you just add the equipment over onto the, onto the squad. But to the chief's point, the Illinois Department of Public Health has such rigorous, rigorous standards on, if you need to back that thing down for a day, you've got to notify the state that you've backed it down for the day because of staffing, and then you've got to notify them when it comes back up. It, it's, the system is designed to make you make sure that it's up and running at ALS all the time. The flipping up and down is arduous at best.
Yeah. So I understand what we were talking about in terms of the numbers of calls and everything else. There's at the very end where I had a concern about trends. And I think the number was, the projection was in 2040, there's going to be a population of 52,000 people in this town.
That's the, that's the number when we got, or that's the number that was projected when we worked with the Chicago Board of Planning.
And it's not residents. Just, so you know, 39,000 was the number of residents from CMAC. It's the daytime population, the people who work here in the industrial park and don't live here.
Correct.
They add.
There's enough for me, too. I'm like, where are we all going to live?
There you go.
There you go. 39,000, 5,000 in the district, and about 8,000 daily visitors that are, and commuters that are coming in and out of town.
I agree.
I just, okay, so, all right, so 39,000. I don't even see that ever possibly being anywhere near there.
That's just a CMAC number. You know, that's Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning.
In 2000, we had a population of 23,977. I know we have some issues regarding our current census, but it is officially 26,235. That's less than 3,000 people in 23 years. We're not going to get 13,000 more people by 2040. It's not happening. There's nowhere to put them.
Can I ask you, Chris, real quick? So what I heard here, and I'm wondering if I'm hearing something different. At our current level, we need three companies, and at this level, we need three companies. So if they, if they have that residential number wrong, is that changing your thinking on what they're recommending? Because from what I'm hearing, sort of like if that was 39, or if that's 32, or whatever, I think the recommendation is still the same, isn't it? I don't know. I'm just curious.
That's something we should apply pose to them.
Yeah, so I was just.
I don't know why you're asking me.
Oh, no, I was trying to understand the intention of your.
My intention of my thing is I think it's over, I think everything's been overestimated here.
Yeah. Because if I can understand the intention, I think I can understand the.
You're correct from my side. You need, you need three companies. You need three companies today. You can do 8,300 calls with three companies.
I guess I would say from my experience of being on Tri-City ambulance board, and over the years, ending up where we are today with an additional demand ambulance run out of the Geneva West Side, that covers both Batavia and St. Charles almost every day on almost constant basis right now. So, you know, the way I look at this is, we need that third company as soon as we can afford and staff that and run that. And that, to me, takes some of the load off of where, where we're at with the demand ambulance that may end up becoming a constant service ambulance, something that's going to be out there and be run 24/7, not just during the peak demands like it is now. So I do see the demand going up. And, you know, I know we can't do it immediately, but we have to figure out how to do it as soon as we can to get that. And I think you're right, Chris. I don't think that that 39,000 number is realistic. I think it's somewhere mid-30s, maybe. Because the first one that was out several years ago was 33,000, if we built out every inch of land we had in the pockets that we had in town with whatever the average density was at that point. So somewhere between 30 and 35 is, I think, where we would end up with what I see that we have to develop. And even, even at that number, even at the bottom of that, just over 30, we have to, we have to look at adding another company. I mean, I just can't imagine how we keep up with the service as it's increased. Sometimes I don't know how they do it. When I look at the amount of numbers we have and the fact that I work in downtown, and I get to see the ambulances and fire trucks go by all the time, constantly.
Yeah. It's through immense dedication by the team and the crews. They've, they've really sacrificed some of their personal time. And I know it's, as Craig said, we see it unfortunately in, you know, increased sick time, but it's understood for the mental health, for the families, and everything else. They have done a yeoman's job in covering all the time. And we were all impacted by COVID, and the fire service really saw. A lot of people didn't want to do it. You saw, if you look at the charts, you see it in the graphs. That's when we saw the dip. But, you know, I can't say enough for our crews, our personnel, our employees who stepped up to do what they needed to do to provide the services to this community. But the time's come to, you know, add some additional assistance to that service.
Tony?
Yeah, thanks. Laura mentioned that when the data was initially gathered, we were short for full-time. So the recommendation of 12, is that in addition to being fully staffed?
Yeah. What it would be, it's in addition to you're fully staffed, would, and all I did is I took how many hours you need to cover and divided them by full-time folks, you need 12. It's impossible for me to be able to project accurately into that, the impact of your part-time folks and what, what they can do and when they're available and things like that. So if you just said, okay, the, the way, the way you solve all of this today and cover all of ours, you hire 12 full-time folks. Now, it's going to cost you a whole lot of money to make that happen, which is more than you can do. So.
12 on top of.
12 on top of what your current staffing would be. Absolutely.
And not, not where it was at before we made.
Correct. Yes, sir.
And on those lines of hiring, a couple questions. One is, you know, you mentioned, it's not necessarily money that gets, gets people in the, in the door. What is it? What are some things that we can be doing to attract? And I'm, I'm sure that's a question that's being asked everywhere, but.
Well, I believe it is, Tony. And I mean, if you've seen my recruiting video and things, and as Craig said, destination department, or, you know.
You've got some nice facilities.
We have, we have excellent facilities. We're upgrading our, our equipment and things, thanks, you know, to your support and things. But a lot of it has to do with community. It has to do with community demographics in aspects like the schools. You know that, Tony. You know how important schools, library, infrastructure, public works. I mean, all that is immeasurable. And I think, we see it. That's why we have, you know, the development that's going on, the residential, why it's selling so fast. People want to not only live in this community, but they want to be a part of this community. They want to work in this community. And, and that's done through, you know, cooperative liaisons with, with all, with all the employees, and their different units. You know, I have five different employee groups. And the union works very well with my contracted medics, with my part-time personnel, with my volunteer as the people and things. It's through this synergy on what, you know, working together to do what's best for the community that builds community, and it builds that camaraderie, and it makes people want, as we always say in the fire service, to be part of that second family, be part of that home. So it, it's culture of the department and, you know, the desire, desire to be a part of this community.
And that makes sense. And that, that same holds true in school districts. And, you know, Batavia is a destination district for teachers now.
Yeah, I was just gonna, I was gonna add. What I, what I hear when I talk to folks across the country, leave time is more important than money. That's, that's a big deal. You need to, you need to have a quality leave time program. Continuing education funding, we hear as something that's very, very important. And we're starting to hear more and more and more, and it's going to be real interesting to see what this actually looks like, but we're hearing more and more and more about flexible shift staffing. So the 24/48 that starts at 7:00 in the morning and goes till 7:00 the next morning, that we've ran for the last 100 years, the folks that are looking to come into the workforce today, that may not necessarily be the shift that they want to work. So you ask yourself, well, do two 12s equal a 24? And how do we, how do we staff that? You know, can we marry, can we marry two folks together to create a 24-hour shift out of a 12? So I think, I think the departments that are going to do well with hiring the incoming workforce are the ones that step back and say, what does that, what is, what does that workforce value? And then build your schedule, build your, your compensation package, your benefit package around what is valuable to them. And in years past, it was, who's the highest-paid fire department in the region? That's who's going to get the staff. Today, that's not the case. There's a whole bunch of other things that roll in there. And I don't think we really understand all of those components just yet.
Yeah, we're, we're working on that. And there's a lot of national, you know, studies and articles. And one of those is, is looking at a peak demand thing of a 12-hour shift. And we're going to send out a survey. We've discussed it with the union executive board. We've had different feedback in that regard. But we've prepared a survey to go out after this to initially the full-time personnel who work those 24/7s, just to get some feedback to them, to see what their feelings are about a 12, 12-hour shift. There's a couple different models. It's called the 2-3-2 shift that's out there. It's a standard national one. Then there's one, the two-on-two-off day shift that would cover our, our daytime portion from 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, which then equals and works in with what we have currently with our part-time staff, is the purpose of that particular one. And it rounds out to approximately, during a pay period, to 80.5 hours. So you're essentially, it flexes a little bit, but you're essentially working 80 hours in a pay period.
From what I see, the departments that figure this out are going to be the ones that are going to be successful.
I get Mark has got his hand up online. Go ahead, Mark.
Thanks. Appreciate, appreciate all the work that is put into this, this review of what we have here. And then apologies to Jen and Tony, because they look alone there on their side of the room.
Yeah.
So I agree with, with some of the stuff that has been said. I, with what Chris said, the, the numbers seem optimistic in, from a, I, I don't see us having that, that level of residents in the city. I'd be shocked if there's 52,000 at any point, even in the future, in the city at one point in time. Because people leave, and then people come in. So the, the numbers just seem really optimistic that we would be at those levels. To that point, I have, I have friends in, in the fire department, and I'm sure they're listening and wondering what I'm going to say. What, I want to look holistically, because what we do, I mean, this is very shared across the tri-cities. And I'm trying to understand, is every one of, you know, in Batavia, Geneva, St. Charles, looking at this the same way and saying, we need to, you know, increase our staffing dramatically across all three of the cities? Or is this an incremental thing for each of the three cities, North Aurora included? I mean, I know there's so much shared response between us, because we are almost like one large community across all of us when it comes to fire and paramedic response. And I'm concerned that we like blow up our department and be like, okay, we need all these people. And then everybody else is like, thanks, Batavia, you just covered us by increasing your staffing level so much. And nobody else has to put out all kinds of extra cost in their area. So I, I guess I'm a little concerned, because it feels like it's done in a vacuum to me. And, and I want to make sure that we're providing the best services for our residents, because absolutely, the two most important things we do are fire and police response to our residents. Everything else is like, great, it's nice to have smooth roads, it's nice to have plowed streets, but there darn well better, better be somebody at my house if there is a robbery or a fire or a, an emergency response. Those are the things that are the most important to me. So I want to make sure that we're looking at this holistically. And, and what are the responses from our neighbors when it comes to this?
Very good point, Mark. I can't speak, obviously, for the neighbors, but I can give you a little bit of background. Obviously, you know, we have a longstanding history of working with the tri-cities. We have very, we have a number of intergovernmental cooperatives that have been very successful over the number of years. TRICOM since 1975, Tri-City Ambulance since 1982. I'm sure Gary can talk about the public works aspect, electric departments and et cetera. So we've really enjoyed that cooperation between the communities. Each one of the fire services runs a slightly different model. St. Charles, back in 2011, chose to go all full-time. They disbanded their part-time, and they went with a plus-one model. So they have one extra full-timer on every shift to absorb a little of that fluctuation when they have time off. Geneva, on the other hand, depends heavily on their paid-on call and their recalls to return. So Geneva uses a slightly lesser model. Batavia's always kind of run in the middle, to be quite honest with you, which I'm, I'm proud to say, I think we do a good balancing of that. A couple other communities around us which have new fire districts, you have to understand that the tri-cities are all municipal, so they're a little bit different than the fire districts. This, fire districts utilize what are called full-time, part-time positions, where they have part-time people kind of filling in for full-time, which Craig indicated a little bit. We, we don't look at that, that type of a model, and there's some constraints to it and concerns, and that has to do with consistency and coverage and also training and demand aspect. And so that, I know that doesn't really answer your question, gives you a little background, but I can't speak for those individual departments specifically.
No, I, no, I appreciate that. That, that gives me a little bit more. And, and I guess, what are we doing in coordination with them to talk about this further? Because I believe that, again, we've had such great camaraderie, for better, for lack of a better word, with our surrounding communities, that it seems, I feel like, as a representative of the community, that we need to be doing more to work with the surrounding communities, to act as one community, to try to keep our costs as, as low as possible. You know, I see, you know, Geneva lowering taxes, which, you know, hits me kind of hard, because everybody knows my position on that. And they're doing something differently to make it. position on that. And they're doing something differently to make things more affordable for the citizens. And I look at this in the long run is like, that's a lot of people. That is a lot of cost, long run for us, short run and long run for the citizens of Batavia. I want to continue to provide the best that I can for the, for the citizens. But I think that as a larger area, that we, we need to start looking at things a little differently to, to contain these costs overall. So just trying to understand what we can do together instead of trying to think of us, okay, we're going to take care of ours only and, you know, be damned with everybody else around us. This is what we're going to do to help our citizens and, and not think about what can, what we can do with the others around us.
Yeah, Mark, I, I disagree on just, you know, being selfish in this aspect and looking at just ourselves. We have, we have built the decades of cooperative operation. And that's spelled out in our mutual, what's called mutual aid and auto aid agreements with the communities and how we, we, we help each other. And you saw it in Craig's slides, but it's also in his report. So I'm going to let him speak a little bit on how our auto aid, mutual aid works. And I can obviously enhance that. But he had, he looked at that, and I want you to hear it from a third party rather than a biased individual who feels we have a very good program in auto and mutual aid.
No, and I apologize. I was not trying to be combative in that. It just feels like there's got to be more. We can, to me, this looks very centric to Batavia and not thinking about everybody around us so that we can, what does it look like if we say Batavia, Geneva, St. Charles together? How many do the three communities need together? And have they asked that question to be able to come up with an answer that we can all satisfy that need?
I just want to address two things first. One of them was, you mentioned Geneva's tax rate. So the city of Geneva has 1,700 fewer homes than the city of Batavia does. And yet they have the, about the same or slightly above the REAV. And so I think that is a large factor that explains why their tax rate is less than the city of Batavia. The other thing is, when we're looking at this study, we, and the personnel needs, we can't, when we need someone to work overtime at this point, we can't ask someone from Geneva or St. Charles to work that overtime. And Craig's analysis is simply looking at the number of people that we have full-time, what their time off benefits are, what hours need to be covered by our department alone, just to be fully staffed here and not have to have people work overtime. So it's an analysis. And the other thing is, we're going to go by it incrementally. We have to from a financial perspective. We can't bite this all off at once. And so we'll make a slight adjustment and then we'll measure and see what we need to do from there.
Just an FYI for you, Mark. Go to the Geneva website and look at the 100 million-plus dollars that Geneva is planning on spending in the next five to seven years. If you look at the plan that they have there, I think that includes a new fire station, an upgrade to the east side. There's a lot that's coming for Geneva that's going to change their tax rate.
Sure. I'm not trying to be argumentative here. My point is, we, we consistently talk about tri-city ambulance. We talk about what we do to support each other's communities when it comes to fire and police and, and paramedic coverage. And I'm just trying to look at this not as, here's what Batavia needs to do and separate ourselves from the other communities around us. We, we share these resources regardless of, you know, if there's five incidents happening in Batavia at one time, there are people from North Aurora, Geneva, St. Charles that are helping us out. And the same thing happens when, if something happens in Geneva, St. Charles, North Aurora, we all have shared resources. And I don't, I want to make sure that we are looking at this holistically. Because I don't want us to put all the skin in the game and then Geneva, North Aurora, St. Charles, whomever else to look at and say, thanks, Batavia, because your shared resources have covered us from having to increase our staffing. Because I, and I don't have those numbers of how many times have we shared resources to other cities and vice versa. When people have helped us out, that's what we do. And that's, I mean, that's great. That's, it's a great representation of what humanity should be, is not just paying attention to what's happening in your community, but paying attention to everything that's going around you and helping people out. But we shouldn't be the only ones putting money into this to solve this problem. Because the problem isn't just a Batavia problem. This is a tri-cities and around problem.
I can speak to the automatic aid scenario, automatic aid received, automatic aid given. Just to, just to give you some numbers, which, which may, may address your question here. Looking at year 2022, automatic aid received, which means a response from Elburn Fermilab, Geneva, North Aurora, St. Charles, West Chicago, somebody was coming into the city of Batavia that occurred 82 times. If I look at how many times Geneva fire, or I'm sorry, how many times Batavia fire went out to one of those communities in that same year, it's 85. So you had, we had 82 coming to us, we went out 85. If I look at 2023, coming into Batavia, 88, going out, 98. So your, your numbers are pretty, we, we looked at this and the, the deputy chiefs helped me dig through all of this stuff as we were putting it together. But your, your auto aid received and your auto aid given are, are pretty close in numbers consistently across the board. So the, I think the sharing of fire resources, if you will, is, is pretty effective between those, between those communities as it relates to coming in and out to make sure that everybody's covered. I don't know if that helps you or not, sir, but that.
It does. But I would also want to know what those numbers are for each of those communities that are contributing and receiving to that. So it's one thing to look at just Batavia. But what is that number for North Aurora, Elburn, Geneva, St. Charles? And then you start to expand that out because it starts to spread out, right? This is not just, not just five communities working together. Then it's, as you spread out, there's more and more and more. So it, those are, they're great statistics. But I don't know that statistics tell the whole story or tell the story that I'm necessarily looking for. And that's not fair. I don't know all those numbers. But those numbers change as you start to incorporate more and more and more into the equation.
Those, those numbers are broken out for you in the report. So what, what I did is I, on page 50 and 51 in the report, I actually list out how many responses coming in, how many responses going out from each one of those departments. So you can, you can, you can see that. It's, it's in there for you and broken down.
Okay, I appreciate that. And my apologies for not being able to dig into this. There's been so many personal things in my life that I have not had the time to really delve into this report. So my apologies on that. I will take the time, now that I've got some more cycles in my life to look at that. But it is, those are all things that I think everybody here needs to consider is current and future and, and the surrounding area, what's, what's happening around us, that we're not putting every, we're not the ones solving this problem by throwing a bunch of numbers and dollars at this.
Yeah, Mark, I just, just for simplicity's sake, and I just pulled it up on what's called the CAD viewer, tells us where we are in incidents and things. So Batavia is at approximately 5,000 incidents already this year. So we will surpass last year. St. Charles is about 5,800 incidents right now. Every year, all of us are surpassing. But St. Charles has three fully-staffed fire units at present, running about 800 calls and more than we do. You had mentioned Geneva, they're running about half of what we are, about 2,600, 2,800 calls. Elburn is currently at about 2,400 calls. And those are with two companies. North Aurora also with two companies running, it says here, a little over 2,800 calls. And Sugar Grove at one, basically one company is at about, at 1,600 calls. So when you equate it to the number of incidents and calls, you have to look at St. Charles doing 5,800 with three. We're doing 5,000, two, kind of two and a half-ish, not quite two and a half. Geneva, which has two companies, is running half of us at about 2,800. And North Aurora, which you were speaking of, is at 28, right now, 2,839 out of two companies. So some of these are doing it, yes, they're doing it, but they're right-sized at this point. And we're a little under right-sized, to be honest with you.
I'm not sure exactly what Mark was kind of going for as far as coordination among municipalities in the area. But there are lines on the structure, different EMS companies for municipalities, from IDPH and Region 9 and through those pieces, correct?
Absolutely. I actually attended the Region 9 meeting this morning. So, and our Southern FOX system, which handles us. And they are stretched. You probably know the hospital and et cetera without getting into that. But those, the mutual aid agreements, a few months ago, I had to do the Mavis Mutual Aid Box Alarm System, which all communities doing because you have those maximum incidents that no one community can ever handle. And that's why we have those reciprocal agreements. I'll be coming to you here next, at your next meeting about a mutual aid with our ESD, our emergency services. We have a tri-city ambulance meeting this Friday, and we'll be discussing those aspects. Because the area is, is growing also, not just our community. But it's through these interoperative auto aid, mutual aid agreements. Every year, we, we upgrade those aspects. It's a new calendar year. We'll be looking at that. We're a little different because our budget year is calendar, and the rest of them are all on a fiscal year of May 1st to end of April. So it's around January, we revisit those on the auto aids and mutual aid aspects. And same with Region 9 and things. So we are redeveloping the policies and mutual aid agreements.
Yeah, I'm looking at this report. It's very informative to me. I appreciate that. I strongly believe that we need to be proactive here. And we are going to see shortages. This, it's, it's the same in school districts. I see it all the time. And so, you know, we, the good thing is, we see, we know it now, and now we know what we got to do. So that's, that's the silver lining here in that. One thing I did, did, it's a comment. I have not so much a question. I won't surprise anyone here. You talked about cost effectiveness of the tri-city ambulance service, which, yes, it is, tri-city ambulance is a, as an intergovernmental agreement between the tri-cities is very effective. Whether we continue outsourcing for profits to be made, whether that's cost effective, I'm not so sure about that because I haven't seen data on that. And I'm expecting that as part of the strategic plan and, that you guys, that the department worked on previously, I think it was in 2026, to be digging into that piece. But I just want to, just wanted to point that out so it stays in the, on the agenda. Because, you know, there's, there's, there's profits being made with that, and we don't know what those profits are. And it's been, since you said 1982, it's a long time to not take a deep dive into seeing what's really, the numbers are in that. So the data on that is, is necessary for us to really buy into the cost effectiveness of the, of that system.
Yeah, I can't speak to that. We do have, and Alderman Wolf is your, you know, representative that we have a meeting on a Friday, of which the preliminary draft budget will be presented, things like that. So I'm sure he can report back to you more adequately than I can at a later date. But this, this study did not look at TRICOM or tri-city ambulances as part of our service delivery. I mean, that, those are aspects that we've utilized for a long time. This specifically looked at our, you know, our needs and our resources within the fire department.
Yeah. And I just bring it up because it was mentioned in there, and you had mentioned the cost effectiveness of tri-city ambulance. But I understand this is focused more on...
Yeah, I use this cost effectiveness aspect in a generality. It's important for us, fiduciary, to, you know, be responsive and understanding of our community, as you were in the, you know, last budget approval on, on the impact to our citizens and the community in general. Appreciate that, Tony.
Any other questions or comments? Kevin?
I just want to ask comment here on page 64. There's a list of, you know, overtime, voluntary overtime and mandatory overtime. This is just a comment. We got some folks here who are doing 120 hours of mandatory overtime a year, if I'm reading this right. As dedicated, you spoke of the dedication of our officers, and that's amazing. They can be as dedicated as they want, but mandatory overtime sucks for everybody. So I just really want to thank them from the bottom of my heart, and I'm sure from everyone else, being asked to do 100 hours of mandatory overtime a year on top of the one I'm looking at here, 220 hours of voluntary overtime. That's a lot of overtime. So thank you, the guys in the back. And I know some stepped out. Like, that's, that's stepping up. Like, that's really doing, doing some good work. And we thank you for that. And sorry, we have to ask you to do mandatory overtime. So.
I appreciate that, Kevin. And it has increased. And that's really, it's impacting their personal lives. So this, one of the main reasons we need, we've come to you with this request.
Yeah, just my two cents. I mean, a lot of good things said here. You know, this is, this is tough for me because, personally, because I just, you know, my, my gut wants to go with whatever the chief wants to do, right? It's like, this is their world. They live it every day. They're going to let us know what they need. It's kind of the, the nasty part of oversight. But, you know, I think, I think Mark does make some good points. And I think that number really does kind of skew things, right? Obviously, if we don't have 8,300 calls, what is that number with a, you know, population, when those numbers shrink? What does that look like? Not to say that we don't need another engine, right? We discussed that as well. I think I used the wrong term there, but another truck.
We'll educate you.
Yeah. But in the same vein, want to thank Craig and McGrath Consulting for all the data. Because I think, you know, as much as, you know, we have the feels of, oh, yeah, this, you know, if we can put the data behind the field, that's, that's, that helps us make our decisions. But I do agree with Mark that we, you know, let's look at, at the other towns. Let's see what we're doing. I know we talk to them all the time. Maybe you guys have already. I don't know all the ins and outs. But, you know, definitely something to explore. I think it's almost a blessing in disguise that we don't have the, the 2.1 to throw at it right now, or whatever it would have been. I think, you know, a staggered approach in this will be great for us. And we'll be able to kind of play it out. And I think, you know, the staffing challenges are there. That's a no-brainer. It's how do we, you know, how do we implement? How do we move forward for Batavia specifically? So all that said, thank you, guys. Thank you, team. Everyone back there who does, does all the, the heavy lifting. So, yeah, we'll get you guys what you need.
Yeah, we appreciate that, Tony. And we realize that. And that's partly why, you know, we, we presented this after we completed the budget and things, so that we have the time to develop a, you know, a plan that works for all. And we're working, like we said, with, with the guys to develop that and also with you and the community so that it's well-received by all. We're not, we want to serve and, but we want to also be fair and equitable to all the stakeholders. These guys have worked hard. They need some fairness. So does our community need a proper service. And you guys have to be, you know, fiduciaries. And we appreciate it.
Oh, and the other thing I wanted to earmark, because I think Tony, it sparked, you know, if we, if we're, if we're going to throw some, some money out, let's earmark some appreciation time for the team or something we can do that you guys can come up with, that, you know, you guys can do as a team-building thing, whatever. But obviously, some things like that take funds. So I would love to propose that we do something and, and things like that. If we, if it's an annual thing, if it's a bi-annual thing, that can bring other employees as well who would want to come work here, I would think.
Right. And I think that's part of, you know, the overall community. Shameless plug for HR over there in the steel game coming up this Friday. Those are the, those are the things that, you know, are done within the city for our employees and our community. And we just, we just had what we call our firefighter of the year appreciation dinner a few weeks ago. And we'll be embarrassing him in front of you here after the first of the year. I already kind of warned him. I already kind of warned him, and he's, he's, you know, they're, they're very humble. I appreciate that. I said, if I have to, I'll bring you while you're on duty. He's like, oh, great. So, but we did have that, we had good attendance, and, and we try to do what we can. And we have our, our family Christmas, the kids' Christmas party coming up in a week and things. So we do, we do try to do that, it's part of our family and team building, and we want them to know, and I really appreciate it from you guys, letting them know how appreciated they are for what they do, so.
If there's more we can do.
And HR, like I said, does that for all our employees within the city, because they all work hard to contribute within this community.
And I just wanted to make one more comment to remind everyone, you know, this, this recommendation of 12 new firefighters over time is an increase. We can't forget that there's also going to be attrition, because we're all getting older, and we got to keep, you know, it's beginning more competitive to hire people, so keep that in mind, too, as we, as we move forward here.
Where you are, Craig, it's okay.
Yeah, I would, you know, I haven't said anything tonight, I've just sat here and listened to everybody else talk. I'm, I just want to commend Craig for this very good report that he put together for us, because I think it clearly illustrates the city council, as I think I heard tonight, that everybody's at the realization, we do need to increase the manpower on the Batavia Fire Department. And your ideas of how to do it are interesting for us to consider, but I appreciate the fact that we, I think we've got ourselves over the hump, so to speak, that we do have a manpower issue going here, and we've got to do some stuff in the Batavia Fire Department to bring ourselves up to, to snuff. You know, we have some, some great intercooperation, which has been talked about here tonight, with the mutual aid automatically from the neighboring communities, and that's kind of a model, I think, in the eyes. I've had other mayors come in here and ask me how you get all these people to agree to do this, and, you know, there's no magic formula to it, it's just, if one department gets to know the other department, and we train together and work together, it becomes easier and easier for us to go to their fire, or come to our issue, or whatever's going on. So I think we, we need to heighten the relationships that exist between the Batavia, Geneva, and St. Charles Fire Department, and I think we're doing that, but we do need to hire some more people in Batavia to strengthen what we got. We've, we're very, we're, I'm very proud of the fact that we have very nice facilities for them, we're the ones that got individual bedrooms for everybody, and all the nice stuff that's been put in, and that was put together by the support of the taxpayers of Batavia when they passed the referendums to do that. So the Fire Department has a good side to it, and the people appreciate what they're doing, and I think we need to, as a community, pay some recognition to the Fire Department for the great job that they're doing. So I just wanted to thank you for the good reports you put out, because I think you've helped bring the message loud and clear home that we need to do this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we'll move to item 14, which is Resolution 2024-152R, authorizing city staff to execute an MSA and SOW with SciTel Solutions for the 2024 City of Batavia Surveillance System Upgrades.
Give me one second to pull this up. I'll give a very brief introduction, and I'll let Daniel speak for a minute. So this has been a process that we've been working on now for the better part of a year to kind of get to this point. Basically, our goal for this project, with the surveillance project, is to focus on really three areas. Downtown public event-type areas, so where we tend to have Windmill City Festival, BatFest, farmers markets that attract thousands of people to them, those are increasingly becoming very complex and complicated incidents for our police department to manage. We know they are, God forbid, targets for incidents, and that's something that we did see with the Highland Park situation a couple of years ago on July 4th, that having a surveillance camera system in their downtown helped them get photos, apprehend the person, and get through that a lot quicker. We focus this, like I said, on those critical areas. We also focused on critical infrastructure, so another component of this project is our, I think, seven electric substations. Those increasingly have become targets for attacks in the past couple of years. We've seen people in other states and other areas try to do things to them that can cost tens of thousands, if not millions of dollars, to fix. Those are things that could cause long-term power outages for the grid, so having a level of footage in there is important. And then also some city facilities, so both our fire departments, getting some cameras on those, and then our Public Works facilities, you all just approved $2 million for a fire apparatus. Something were to happen to it, something got defaced, that's probably something we'd want to know how that happened. So we've got not only lots of equipment, but also lots of people in these places that could have something happen. So that's kind of all there, and then I'll let Daniel talk a little bit about the company, basically. So what you should know is, we went through an RFP process, we solicited proposals from pretty much anyone who was in this field. We had some criteria about telling us how you're going to do it, what your considerations are, how your networking works, we kind of went through a couple of different criteria that we wanted. Ultimately, of those nine proposals we received, we really only considered two to be responsive. What that meant was, we did get a number of them that were basically a quote sheet, which did not allow us to understand how the system works, how they work, what their track record is, it was not what we considered a responsive proposal. So we wound up with two proposals, one was substantially over budget, one was within our budget, and they met all of our criteria, had good references, and I'll let Daniel speak for a little bit about SciTel Solutions of Aurora.
Just also wanted to mention that Alderman-Lancy has left the discussion, he works in the industry, and so on a conflict of interest basis, he's just going to sit in the audience for these discussions.
Hello, everyone, hope you're all having a great night. I want to start out by thanking you for letting me be here to kind of present. I'm going to go through a couple of slides here, kind of explain what's going to happen, what kind of the process we went through. I'll start off by saying, my name is Dan Bruno, I'm the Business Unit Manager of Security for SciTel Solutions. I've been in the industry going on 20 years now, so I got a lot of expertise in a lot of things, all holistically for security services. So I'm just going to run through this PowerPoint here, so we're SciTel Solutions. Oh, I see. Doesn't go along with you, okay. All right, so this slide here just basically defines where SciTel Solution is, our headquarters is out of Aurora, Illinois, so we're close, about 15 minutes away. So what advantages have? We're close, you can call us up for service on those critical infrastructures, something happens at one of your substations, right? We can come out and fix that product for you, we're also going to be taking care of your full network, things along those lines. So we have pretty good presence across the continent of the United States, but once again, our headquarters is right here out of Aurora, Illinois. Okay, this slide basically tells you everything that SciTel Solutions does. So we have a full networking outfit, so part of this is, we're going to be providing switches and routing, and have access into the network to do a full turnkey service for you guys. So we maintain that network, it'll be in parallel with your internal network, so holistically separate, and once again, so no approaches coming in from the outside world. The second thing is security, which, of course, I lead, we just spoke about that. Life Safety Management, that's monitoring of all the devices that we're going to maintain in the network, so we'll get real-time alerting for up-down, for IP cameras, switches that have issues, things like that, so we can be proactive, and also be able to remote-in to fix things in real time. All right, just a little collaboration of what we went over when we went through this RFP. So we collaborated with all the stakeholders, Public Works, PD, Fire, to get all their buy-in, and really hone in on what the products we have. We had to kind of split this up in a couple different phases, because it was a pretty big project, and cost-wise, so I think we hit all those points. The system design, so it's cost-effective, reliable, expandable, easy to manage. All the engineering and installation services, we've done in-house, it'll be SciTel personnel, no outside contractors. 24/7 post-installation maintenance supports, that's going to be with or knock what I talked about, being able to assist when there's issues in real time. So the system description, this is basically what we're offering right now with this first phase. So 55 new cameras, mainly throughout the downtown area, that's 29 of them, we're going to be using some of your light poles and, and electrical infrastructure, made it really nice that you guys did all that stuff in-house. As Max stated, we got six cameras going to go on the outside of Public Works, seven at each of the fire stations, six externally, one inside the engine base, so you guys can see what's going on in there. And then at all electrical substations, we got at least one or two imagers going in at all those locations as well. That also includes bringing in your current cameras throughout your facilities here into the new VMS. We're going to reutilize those existing cameras, provide licensing, and import them into the new management system. Okay, going to be about 112 cameras total between new and old. Okay? The new VMS, as I stated, it's going to be Access Camera Station Pro, you guys already have access cameras in-house, so we're just going to go with the Access Camera Station. We also have a mobile trailer that's going to be part of this package, so essentially you'll be able to move that around when you have events or anything like that, give you that portable thing to go deal with whatever issues you have, okay? That'll be a nice little unit, too. All the switches integrate the camera feeds, the back hall, a lot of point-to-point wireless, so this is a pretty in-depth project. So most of these locations don't have any kind of Ethernet or fiber, so we got to do a lot of PTP, which is point-to-point wireless, to communicate back and forth to back hall, all that throughput, that we need for the camera system. Okay, moving on. All right, so this basically just shows what we're targeting in this first phase. So as you can see in the downtown area, we've got a lot of coverage, municipality, municipal building here, up and down some of the busy streets, your substations are included, of course, Public Works kind of shows you what the coverage will be with those cameras, and then the fire station. All right, and that's about it. Does anybody have any questions? Yep.
Justin, go ahead.
Could we get that map published, at least among the, you know, email?
Yeah, this, yeah, this map is also in the materials for the, yeah, so in the board packet, and we have a more detailed deck I can provide you as well.
Any other questions? Mark, go ahead.
Yeah, I guess, I've got lots of questions, but I want to start with, I'm confused as to why Tim is not part of this conversation, because he is, he has expertise in this, and I don't believe that he or his company is financially benefiting from this discussion. So I would really like Tim to be part of this conversation.
That is, that is up to Alderman-Lancy. My understanding is that he is a manufacturer's rep for the type of equipment that would be purchased as part of this type of project, right? So it is up to Alderman-Lancy if he feels that it would not be a conflict of interest for him to participate in this discussion. Definitely, I don't want to make that decision for you.
Yeah, no, I can participate in the discussion, I just want to go vote.
I had, just in, in full disclosure for everyone, I had recommended to talk with city attorney about it.
Talked with my lawyer, yep.
You did, okay, that's fine, that's fine, great.
Okay.
I apologize.
No, it's okay.
No, I just wanted to make sure, I was confused about that, so I just wanted to make sure. So my other thing, and, sorry, I feel like I'm cutting Laura, you and Tim off, but I did have one other point. There's the, the multiple, everybody heard me before, I'm not in favor of this, I was in favor of this from the standpoint of the, the assets to the community, not even sure I would say assets, but the, the protection of the community from the electrical substations, that they're unmanned locations most of the time, and, and I understand having the, the cameras there, I'm not in favor necessarily of, of cameras in the public areas. I'm definitely not in favor of cameras at the fire departments where those are manned 24 by 7, and, and I understand what Max said when it comes to, we don't want, you know, equipment there to be compromised, yet that equipment is inside, inside closed doors, same thing at the, at Public Works, where I'm not sure what we're protecting in those areas, especially at the fire departments, where there's 24 by 7 personnel, that we just seem to be like, hey, let's just keep on putting cameras everywhere we possibly can as part of this, and it's just raising our costs. So I'm not in favor of this in general, and then when we get to this, where it's like, oh, a bunch of cameras around the, in the fire departments and stuff, I'm absolutely not in favor of this. So I'm just going to tell you right now, my vote is no on, on this in its current form.
I could, we already have cameras where we have 24-hour personnel, and so the motive behind it is to, you know, protect millions of dollars of equipment that we have made investment in. With regard to the cameras that we have in areas where people gather, I think we only need to have referenced the last three days of the news to see the potential for apprehension of folks who commit crimes. That person's facial recognition to so many people in the United States, I think, made it impossible for him to hide, and I think that it in turn provides a disincentive to others who think that they would be able to engage in the same behavior and get away with it. And there are many communities who have utilized this type of surveillance in similar measure to quickly apprehend those who have perpetrated active violence in their community. And so our police department is very much in favor of having this as a tool at their disposal in order to keep our community safe.
Understood. I believe, I believe some of those photos that were from him were from inside a car at a Starbucks, these were photos taken from private enterprises, not from public cameras. The, the best photos were of, from a private industry. That being said, again, I believe putting 14 cameras around our police stations, or I'm sorry, our fire stations, when our equipment is almost inside those stations, not outside those stations, I believe, is, is an abundant waste of money, but that's just my personal opinion. And that's, that's about all, that's about all I have to say, everybody can argue against me, but that's all I can say right now.
Any other comments, questions, and what's before us? I will say, I was surprised when I read through this the first time, that we actually had that many cameras already installed. That was my first thing, and then, second, I'll side a little bit with Mark, I think it's a little overkill in a couple of places, especially like the fire stations. I don't know how many views we have to have. I just, literally this weekend, myself installed new garage door opener with a camera, and then realized there's a camera on the keypad outside, which covers almost the exact same view. So it, it happens real easily when you start doing this. I guess, I'm okay with the way this is set up, I don't know that I want to see us go a lot beyond this in total. I, I mean, I'd actually be okay if we shrunk some of this and didn't have as many cameras at the places that we do have high traffic at or 24/7 coverage with people there. I know that that can't provide some of the information we might need or be able to get from it, so I can go either way on that. Tim?
Yeah, thanks. So just to be clear with everybody who ever's watching, I mean, I think the council knows, Laura knows, but, so yes, I'm a manufacturer representative, yes, I know Dan and his company, yes, I represent a camera manufacturer, I do things like this in my private life. You know, that being said, there, there are many solutions out there, I want to give a shout-out to Dan and his team, I know, you know, there was a ton of work put into this, it's a, it's a great design. I had a couple of questions, though. For the red shots, they're going down, are those high-megapixel shots, or is that PTZs, 41s? Okay.
Need to use the mic so that we can get you on broadcast.
I was going to say, it's like 29 megapixel, so basically the gist of that is to go at the, into that long street and have enough pixels on target to capture plates and things along the lines as people go up and down that, or vehicles go up and down that corridor.
And with the cross-section, we're not going to get a ton of...
That's correct.
We're going to catch underneath, yep.
Yep.
What else? Oh, and then do we have, are those UFOs on, on Wilson with the purple?
Purple and blue, that's correct.
Okay, so what, two there?
What's a UFO?
Oh, I'm sorry, so, it's a, it's a quad sensor, so four, four lenses up top for overview, and then there's a PTZ underneath it, so forensic zoom, right? So if one of these catches out there, that thing can zoom in and, and look at it.
It's called the best bang for the buck, so, basically with the design, we try to utilize most of the multi-sensors, so basically a quad is four single imagers within one housing.
One license is the real kicker.
Yep, one license. You think of a, a single camera gives you one view, one small area. With these, it's a little more money for the camera itself, but it provides four sensors, and some of these are 4K sensors, which are eight megapixel per, basically what that gives you when you're looking at a view holistically, big old area, and as you digitally zoom in, that zooming into the physical image itself, it provides enough pixel density to stay clear, so it doesn't get blown up and look pixelated as you zoom into the physical image. you zoom into the physical image itself. So that's the technology we try to use. So basically, less cameras to do more, because this could have easily been a hunter camera layout with single imagers across this exact same area to get the same coverage that we provided with this design here, so.
And just last point, and I know I kind of gave the commercial already, but there are only a few partners, thank God, we landed on Cyentel and Dan, there's only a few out there in this area that can do this well, stay with the city, watch it get implemented. You guys will see, when this starts to get implemented, there's tweaking 24/7, you know, in the beginning, right? To make sure everything's working out, that's when you need a team like this. And so if we do end up moving forward with this, obviously I'm going to stay myself, but, you know, these guys are top-notch, they're going to, they're going to kill it for us, so.
Appreciate that, too.
Something else I'd like to mention is that I'd like to thank Cyentel for coming out and actually doing a mock-up on one of the decorative street lamps that is part of our River Walk, and taking those pictures and coming to a HPC meeting and showing HPC what those were going to look like, and HPC said they had no problems with it. They understand the need.
Right? Because that's not something that's standard. That's a color they had to go get, and that's, you know, probably had to paint it, and, you know, so not everyone would do that.
It'll actually look a little cleaner for the end product, but we just want to give an idea of what it would look at worst scenario on one of your light poles there.
Well done.
Thank you.
And then I just want to say a couple of other things. This has already been scaled down quite a bit from our original proposal and kind of where we were at. Part of that's cost, but also part of that's to those exact concerns. Where do we need cameras versus where would we maybe want them if we had unlimited funds? We kind of really were intentional about public gathering spaces where we do know we have these events, critical infrastructure and critical throughways. With regard to the fire stations, these are our, really, that we go through the list, the only buildings in our entire city that we own that do not have cameras on them. Our wastewater treatment plant, our water treatment plant, City Hall, et cetera, these are really the only two, along with Public Works, that don't have anything. And we think about how critical these facilities can be, especially during certain incidents, or how difficult our responsibility may be if there's, you know, things going on. All of that ties into it. And so within the $320,000 budget, really only 50 of that is from the police or the fire department side. So it's a relatively smaller component of the broader project.
And I'm not saying that they don't need to be cameraed or, you know, to have that. I'm just trying to understand why, I guess, just simply why we have to have so many cameras at one facility.
Part of that is due to the layout of the building. So, you know, if we put things here, it can't cover anything around the backside. There's jutouts and cutouts that make it so that those are less able to be seen. So one of the things we'll also do, kind of coming out of this, is we'll have what's called detailed design review, and that's where we will actually finalize all of these locations. This is kind of what our initial thinking is, but some things may tweak here and there to kind of, like you said, try to get as much coverage as we can with as few cameras as possible.
And as far as accessibility, I'm sure it will be available to the police department first and foremost, and then all the utility ones will all be available to the utilities. So that way they can access that, you know, on a moment's notice if we have a problem where somebody gets called out and they say they've got a problem on a substation or a line out of a substation that will be able to, they can access that remotely, so that way the people that need to see what they need to see can get to it quickly, so that way it's not, hey, I got to go find a supervisor, or I got to find somebody else to get the information so that I can look at it before I head out there.
That is absolutely correct. So I'll just speak and then you can help. So essentially, this is all going to be user-based, so we can go through and create user credentials that will only give people in certain facilities access to their cameras. And this is absolutely accessible from anywhere in the world 24/7, and it's a secure socket. So what's that mean is you don't have to open up ports in the firewall to create a potential risk to come in and get hacked and whatnot, right? This is all going to be secure access at any time via mobile app. There's a browser app for it as well, and there's also a thick client, so you can access it all from anywhere in the world with an internet connection and access through the cloud.
Yeah, I was just going to say, you know, the other thing, and I'm sure Dan could talk for three hours on this, and you can take it in many different directions, but this industry is moving so fast and that the technology that goes with these, the good thing is, is that the cameras that these guys use, the video management software platform that we're going to be using and everything, can change with the times. So the cameras that we put out there today will be able to, hopefully, I think I know what they chose, will be able to, you know, utilize functions of those day two that we maybe didn't see day one, or whether that's a third-party application we put on top of it, or, you know, all sorts of different, and you don't have to deploy that on everything. You know, it's like, hey, we just want a certain analytic, you know, weapons detection, whatever, for this, you know, peg bond center, whatever it might be. Those things are all possible with, with this hardware, and that's, you know, that's again, a testament to these guys, they're not going to put in, you know, garbage that's basically a paperweight if we decide to do some, you know, day two.
That's correct.
I've got a question, and I think it's probably for the police chief here. As we're looking at the maps that they've given us, are there sort of like key spots that aren't being covered that you are sort of making you nervous, or does this seem like a pretty decent coverage map for you?
No, so we have also been extensively working with Max and agree that this is a good coverage area. There were other areas that we had looked at, you know, that were cut out of it. You know, what I like to see is, you know, some of our public parking lots, maybe where we've had issues in the past, covered, yes, but not as critical as these locations where we have mass gatherings of people. And it was mentioned, I think, at the beginning of the presentation, the ability to have a mobile unit that we can move, you know, maybe where we're seeing issues with vandalism or areas where we don't have coverage, like the Fourth of July, perhaps, where we can move a mobile unit to be able to, you know, put it into an area where it could assist us with issues that we may see at a large event gathering. So I think this was well done for what we're looking for.
I do have a bit of heartburn about the downtown surveillance from a privacy standpoint. I don't have a very well-articulated argument to that effect, but I know that the Batavia Community Diversity Initiative was consulted earlier on when we were first discussing budgeting for this. Have they been consulted or discussed at all as this has moved along?
We have made them aware. We have not heard anything back. But one of the things I will say is, a couple of them touched on things like retention policy, access to footage, and misuse of footage. Those were really those main concerns at the get-go. One of the things we did is made it a shorter retention period. Our retention period is, I think, basically as short as we could get it while still being legally able to comply with FOIA requests. So it's 30 days, which is basically as low as we could get it based on our legal guidance. We've also attached within the documents our proposed policy that would be implemented by the police department. A couple of things there that came out of those community diversity initiatives conversations were the annual audit of the policy, an annual audit of where we've used the system successfully to either catch crime, deter crime, et cetera, and where things might not have gone well. And my expectation would probably be that as the board members, you would obviously have access to that and be able to, you know, be aware of what has gone well, what hasn't gone well. So it was some of those checks and balances we put in that came out of those feedback. We had shared the locations originally, that map hadn't changed much since the beginning. And ultimately, I don't think, I'm not going to characterize their position on it, but we did what we tried to do to make them aware of what our policies would be, hear them out on concerns, and then try to implement a policy and program that did reflect those concerns.
Any other questions?
Okay. I was going to say, it might, might be helpful to council, I don't know if you guys are going to be doing test shots or anything like that, but it might be helpful to show folks what it would look like, what some of these are going to be seeing, just an idea as we're going about it.
Yeah, obviously, we're happy to answer any and all questions if you were to approve this as it moves along. If you have, you know, wanted to see them or, you know, see what's, you know, covered or other things, please let us know. Yeah.
Hey, I have another question. You can't see my hands up because I see the screen, see that. The thing that just made me extraordinarily concerned was access to this from anywhere on the internet, and that became an even harder no for me. Is this access on the internet from, via VPN? Is there multi-factor authentication? What is preventing, and, and security is not the answer, what is preventing this from being accessed by somebody else? This is, my livelihood is to prevent people from accessing things on my firm's network, and it's a hard job. And what is the security that's preventing somebody else from hacking in, looking at our systems without connecting to our internal network or using multi-factor authentication? Without those things, this is an absolute hard no.
Yep, completely understood. So to answer that question, basically how they're going to enter the system from externally, so Access has, it's called a cloud connect, for all intents and purposes. Essentially, it's a secure connection that once the MVR is online, it's a service where it streams to their servers in their environment and feeds that feedback to the end user. They don't, they don't review that footage, it's not recorded on their side, it's literally just given a live stream from the outside world. So there's absolutely no risk for the internal network, no access whatsoever. Just for full disclosure, Cyentel Solutions also does full network deployments, we do firewalls, the whole nine yards. So we are very cybersecurity intuitive, and we obviously wouldn't do anything to put your guys' internal network in any kind of harm, way, shape, or form. That's one of the reasons why we're putting in a standalone network for all the cameras across your entire environment and just basically giving you access into the physical server itself. So it won't even be on your physical network at all. It'll be on our network that we installed.
I'm not, yeah, I'm not worried about it being on our internal network. I'm being, I'm worried about somebody else from outside being able to access it because they haven't come into our internal network via VPN and haven't used multi-factor authentication to, to say that I'm the person that should be, that is allowed to access this, which means that anybody could access, if they know what to do, anybody could access our systems without being able to authenticate into our systems. If that makes sense.
It does, it does. And there's no worries on that either. So basically how this works is somebody's going to sign up for an Access account, okay? That Access account gets certified through Access itself, and that's the main account that goes into the system, right? That gives it the access to the cloud. And then from there, everybody's going to use that specific login to enter the app, if that makes sense. Give them access to the physical server itself, just the server, no access to the cameras at that point. And that account is multi-factor authenticated, so passwords can't be changed without the administrators getting a notification. And then from there, once they open up that app or go in through the mobile, it basically have to use their own credentials to log in to have access to what they have access to in the system. So this is not something somebody can just hack in and try to get that information.
It's like a portal, it's a portal, Mark.
That's correct.
Okay. I'm going to ask one more question then, and me, when I was reading the, the, the policy on the, on the police side, and Chief, you can answer this question for me. When I was reading the policy on the police side, it was who is accessing and when they're accessing and what they're looking at. I didn't see a statement in there as to why. When I have to access, privilege access things at work, I have to provide a reason as to why I'm accessing that information. So I would expect there to be a case number or something that says, I'm accessing this data because of this police investigation, not just, I'm accessing this data. There has to be a why, not just a how and a when. If that can be added, that gives me a little bit more comfort, even though I'm still going to vote no.
Okay.
But I would like that added as to why the data is being accessed.
That would be something that we'd have to have.
Yeah, maybe if there's a field to put something into, there's not going to necessarily always be a case report number that's associated with it, but we could figure something out.
And that's a protection for the city, too, is to say that this was accessed for this purpose.
I guess the other question that I would have too, and this might be administration or the police, would be when footage is FOIA'd and somebody wants footage for it, say they have a reason that they think they needed to defend themselves, whatever. How do we classify that? What is available from a FOIA request side?
So we had talked to our attorneys about this. It is FOI-able. So basically, any and all footage is considered a government record. That's part of the reason we tried to keep that retention as low as we generally could. Some of those concerns from the community diversity initiative were things like targeting or investigation. So trying to get that as minimal as possible that we can while still being able to meet required statutory FOIA timelines. So to that...
That's very standard, by the way. We're not doing anything out of the norm.
I'm sure that everybody that has any type of surveillance like this has to abide by whatever the rules are.
Eighty percent of the jobs we do are 30 days?
That we, that we know, as the officials voting on this and saying yes or no to this, that we understand that there is that out there, that everything that we have, whatever we retain, somebody can ask for.
There are also exemptions if there is a police investigation as a result of whatever the footage is that is not given out while the investigation is ongoing. So this, these systems are, they're very common in our area. I think we're behind the times on getting this technology, so I'm excited from that standpoint. You know, and as we're all walking around the public ways, there is no expectation of privacy, so I'll just, you know, I'll put that out there.
Okay, any more comments or any more questions? Okay. Then I think I will make the motion that we recommend to council Resolution 2024-152R, authorizing city staff to execute MSA and SOW with Cyentel Solutions for the 2024 City of Batavia Surveillance System upgrades.
I need some second at first.
Motion by Wolf, second by Malay, and we will do a roll call.
Raza?
Aye.
And Lancy abstaining. Beck?
Aye.
Peeper?
Aye.
Malone?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman? Ayazi? Malay?
Aye.
Uwer?
No.
Seron? Vocal singer? So that's one, two, three, seven, eight.
Okay, that'll go on to council with a positive, positive recommendation, and we'll see what the in-vote ends up. All right.
I just want to say thank you for letting me be here and fielding all these questions. If there's any other questions that come up after the fact, Max knows how to get ahold of us. So any questions, just shoot them our way and we'll answer them any way we can. All right, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Great. And we'll move on to item 15, which is Ordinance 2024-082, amendments to the text of the zoning code for section 4.106, refuse recycling grease container and compacting equipment enclosures.
Okay, I'll keep this brief. The council may recall earlier this year, we updated portions of the zoning code for new regulations for, for essentially trash enclosures and recycling enclosures, as well as some municipal code regulations such as time regulations. As part of that, you know, we've been working with business owners now to establish trash enclosures when they're making improvements to properties such as additions or other improvements where it makes sense. So we've been advising them of that so that they are aware now might be the time to make that. In practice of applying the code, we realize that there's, with some unintended consequences with how we drafted the language, to preclude these enclosures from perimeter landscape areas and to comply with the accessory structure setbacks of the base zoning district. Some zoning districts in our commercial districts don't have separate accessory structure setbacks, so they would be limited to building these enclosures such as to a location that the principal structure or the main building would be. the principal structure or the main building would be. That's unrealistic on some existing properties. So staff is proposing a set setback of five feet for trash enclosures from property lines. And in discussion with the Plan Commission, they recommended an additional setback of 10 feet when a trash enclosure is abutting a residentially zoned property, providing some different separation for those properties. We believe that this would adequately address our concerns and be able to locate trash enclosures on most existing properties. There may be a few properties where it is unique in nature, and that is where a variance would be the appropriate avenue. If the council has any questions on this, I'd be happy to discuss further. Yeah, Jennifer?
Are you aware of any properties that this may affect where we might have to consider doing a variance on?
I'm not aware of any properties that a variance would be required with the proposed application. Now, that being said, I haven't taken a survey of every single commercial or industrial property in the city. You know, for an example, we were looking to apply this to a PFI zoning district. The setback would have been, I believe, roughly 30 feet from the property. It would have been at basically the building. It doesn't it legitimately didn't make sense where they could put an enclosure at the 30 feet because there is limitations for where the waste haulers can come in, maneuver, and turn. Some facilities, they don't have rollaway containers. They're 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 heavy enough where they have to actually come and drive and lift it. So that's why we're proposing the five foot and then again, the increased setback of 10 when abutting residential. In looking at adjacent communities that is in line with with how they have been regulating, we still would not allow this in other easement areas or in stormwater management areas. So with that regulation, you know, on new properties, it should, you know, new development shouldn't be an issue. We're just trying to address, again, existing properties, you know, within aging, you know, older community. We have a unique development pattern here in the town, and we're trying to accommodate that.
Other comments or anything? I'll make the motion that we recommend to council ordinance 2024-082, amendments to the text of the zoning code, section 4.106, refuse recycling, grease container, and compacting enclosures. Motion by Wolf, second by Malay. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carries. That's we'll probably put that on consent agenda, I think. And now moving on to Resolution 2024-151-R, authorizing intergovernmental agreement with Batavia Park District for blanket easements for surveillance cameras.
So obviously, some of the locations you just saw are on park district property. We've been talking to them since the start of this project, and this agreement allows us to do what we need to do to put those camera ops, work with them. They would have an ability to approve those locations. We reviewed this with our attorney. They're intending on passing it at their next board meeting. Basically, it lets us do what we need to do to make that happen.
Questions, comments on this? Seems pretty straightforward what I read through. Okay, I will make the motion that we recommend to council Resolution 2024-151-R, authorizing intergovernmental agreement, Batavia Park District for blanket easements for surveillance cameras. Motion by Wolf, second by Sulfah. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Mark?
No.
So eight to one.
I didn't say anything on that one because I don't know.
Oh.
I think I should probably have said from that one, too, but I just don't know.
Yeah, I would I think that would probably be a good idea. So.
Seven to one.
Seven to one with one abstention. Okay. And we'll move on to item 17, ordinance 2024-081, conditioning use for video gaming establishment in the downtown mixed-use district at 140 West Wilson Street.
Okay. East China Inn at 140 West Wilson Street has applied for a condition use permit to operate a video game, video gaming establishment gambling at their current location here in downtown. They have been a part of our downtown for over 30 years, and they are seeking to add this as accessory use to their existing business as an offering to their customers. They feel that in the current climate of restaurant industries and post-COVID, that this would allow for additional customers to potentially come into their business or stay longer using their their bar services. They are proposing five machines located near their bar area, which would be separated by a temporary part wall partition, similar to what you'd see with like cubicles. I believe I included examples of that in the attached memo. And this would be observed by staff at all times. The Plan Commission was supportive of this. They, you know, there was a member of the public that did attend and, you know, spoke against gaming itself, however, noting that since it is in the same shopping center as another entity that has it, they felt it would be unfair to deny the applicant. That was that was what the member of the public said. The Plan Commission voted five to zero in support of this and recommended approval by the city council. Joni is the owner of East China Inn, and she is here tonight. She may have some additional things to add if you'd like to come up and just say a few words. And we're both available for questions after that.
Would also like to just express our gratitude for you guys attending this meeting tonight. And it's been a very long meeting. And you've had to listen to a lot of other things tonight. So I just wanted to let you know that I appreciate your patience.
Thank you. This is my first time, man, like seeing all this action.
A lot of what happened.
You guys have a lot of patience. My bedtime is wrong. Yes, we're very grateful to be part of a Batavia community for all these years, 30-some years. And we want to continue on. And we were hoping this addition of the gaming will give us a little bit more revenue to help to sustain our business because all this this last few years is being struggling times. And that's what we're looking forward to and see how maybe it will help. And we have a big, huge dining room, and it's not how it used to be. Used to be it fills up, but now maybe lucky half. So we just try to see how it goes.
Questions? Anybody? Mark? Go ahead.
Thank you. And Joni, this is I want to make sure that you understand this has nothing to do with you and and your business personally. I order takeout from there quite often, so I do appreciate everything. But you guys have done in my 15-plus years in Batavia, it's countless times I've enjoyed your food. This has come up a lot of times, and everybody says it doesn't proliferate. From 2017 to 2018, there were seven establishments in Batavia. Once this is added, that'll be 10. So it has proliferated for what anybody else wants to say about that. In 2017 to 2018, there were $3.7 million inputted funds in into the machines in Batavia. Between October 2023 and October 2024, that number has increased to $12.7 million put inside, funds into the machines in Batavia. This is a problem. I hope you all recognize this. This is a problem. They have met the conditions that we have set forth in Batavia that they've had their liquor license for a year. However, this is a continued increase in to taking funds out of the citizens of Batavia to to fund the government and to fund these proprietors to help sustain their businesses. And and I get it. I get it. It's an additional source of revenue, and and I wish it didn't come down to this, that this is what was needed to to help these businesses continue to flourish. I'm a no, I've always been a no. I wish we would stop. I wish we would put this to an end. This is this is enough. It's beyond enough. So everybody knows my position. That's all I have to say until we get to a vote and they'll say no.
I, as you know, consistently voted against expansion of gaming, and I'm with Mark on this. I will be voting no. But no offense to the I love your food.
I mean, per usual, I would just say I kind of have have a difference of opinion there. You know, I think as long as as long as it's the law of the land in Illinois and we remain a competitive market for businesses and places, you know, I think we've done the right things in this town in terms of limiting signage and not making it what everyone draws up in their head as, you know, visually this, you know, flashy, we got we got slots over here, slots over there. We don't we don't have that here. You know, the numbers are one thing that Mark brings up, but at the same time, those machines by law still have to pay out the same percentage, right? So if people are playing more, these are consenting adults playing something that they want to do with their money. I mean, and this is a legal thing in the state of Illinois. So I really do think it lends to the non-business friendly category when we when we kind of limit this to, you know, certain folks and especially, you know, someone who's been in our town for 30 years and is coming to us wholeheartedly saying, listen, last couple of years have been tough. Everybody else is doing it. You know, this this will this will help give us some breathing room. I think it behooves us to give them that breathing breathing room that others are enjoying and probably will enjoy in the future as well. So and and again, I will always stand on the fact that we got a lot of other problems for us to sit here and be the 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 moral arbiter of gambling is, you know, you know, go lobby some of the online gambling companies that are out there now because it's it is what it is. So we kind of have to kind of have to live in reality there a little bit and then put some common sense measures around it, which I think we've done. So I will absolutely be in favor of this. And that's where I sit.
Yeah, you know, first off, as far as requests today, you know, I think it makes a lot of sense that if we have a space where we have two other units in that same area, you know, it doesn't quite seem, you know, you do what's asked of you. It seems like the fair way to go. That said, I do think that we're beginning to teeter on the brink of maybe having a little too much around town, right? It does feel like it's beginning to take over an awful lot of our storefronts and our retail space. And I know that as somebody with a family, I don't go to places that have video gaming. So you're you're not like, I unfortunately will no longer be able to go to some of these establishments because that's the choice that people with children often make, right? It's alarming when I go to Funway and, you know, I have to go bowling and I have to keep my kids out of the 21 and only space. I understand it's a tough business market, and I get that. And I, again, we put these rules in place, and so if you meet the rules right now, sure, makes sense. But I do think we should start to think about what is the upper limit? When do we start to say, let's slow this down? How do we begin to slow this down? And it's something we should take seriously, and I think we should really consider sort of the character of our town, and that's what our body here is meant to do, is to think about the character of the town, think about what we want it to look like and guide it. So that's a long-winded way of saying that, you know, I'm going to support this proposal in the future, though I want to take seriously thinking about how to slow down some of the video gambling that that is occurring.
Chris?
I don't want to talk about this in the future at all. We've already talked about this ad nauseam. There's there are things in place which are regulations. The businesses met it. Anybody who votes no is voting against small the small businesses and the various businesses in Batavia. It's been my position all along. I think that we've wasted so much time talking about this. You vote yes or no, be done. The regulations are in place, okay? That's the way it is. I'm voting yes, as I always do. I support small businesses, and I don't see any problem with this because everything is within the regulations. We have compromised based upon these hours and hours and hours of conversations that we've had in terms of getting rid of signage and everything else. This is Batavia is not considered some gaming town. And you can go buy 1,000 lottery tickets right up the road at any other gas station. You can go on your phone as you're sitting in the restaurant on any app you want and gamble your life away. We're not regulating this. I'm voting yes, as I always do, and I don't want to have any more conversations about some path in the future. I think everything is in place. The regulations are fine. We're good to go.
Abby?
First, I want to say also, I've been a customer for 30 years now and have enjoyed your food and wanted to also apologize that in being consistent with my previous votes, I will also be voting no. We will absolutely have another conversation about it in the future and hash it out some more to talk about what the cap should be, and I look forward to that conversation. And I believe that our restaurants should be restaurants and casinos should be casinos, and they should be separate, and they should compete on the service they provide in each of those categories. And I agree that it is, especially in our downtown, proliferating to a point that, yeah, there's just not a lot of room left to move in to be in a different kind of establishment. And I think that we should have a diversity of spots to dine in our town, and and we're it's not a healthy mix right now. So I will also be voting no.
As I've said in the past, this is a tool for businesses to use to run their business. We are not business owners. We're not running their business for them. Anybody has an opportunity to come to Batavia and open up their business and run it the way that they want to. We've seen over and over again establishments that have not been successful and that have tried to service people in this community. This type of tool is not for every business. So there is opportunity for people to come in, to run a business, hopefully successfully if residents support them with the prices that they offer because they don't have this overhead cost to be successful here in Batavia. It's not in every restaurant. A lot of restaurants, people don't even see it. But it is a source of revenue, not only for the businesses, but also for our community, for for our city on our budget, to be able to do some of the things that we do and provide to the community. It's not a big amount of money, but it is something that we're able to do to provide some additional services. As for the people that put the money in there, it is a choice. They do make a choice. As somebody that has some in my household with somebody that puts quite a bit of money in there, it is very hard to see them toss money in those machines. But for us to regulate it here in Batavia is not going to stop that person from finding other sources of throwing that money into the machines.
I just want to comment, too, on this aspect, a couple of things. As far as the type of establishments that attract families or people that are looking for environments without a gaming without gaming machines in them, I mean, there's there market. If there was a market for that, or if, you know, her restaurant could survive without it, she probably wouldn't be here. And and people, this is what people are doing. If we're going to look at it from a moral standpoint, people are drinking. People, there's vape shops all over town. There's, I mean, are we going to decide what legal behaviors that adults are allowed to engage and not engage in? I think that's where we start getting into this slippery slope of of trying to prevent people from things that they are legally allowed to do as adults. I also support businesses that are trying to stay open. I'd rather see East China Inn have a couple of gaming machines than go out of business. They've been here for a really long time, and I also have enjoyed your. And I think that there is a space, though, with enough people in this town looking maybe for something different. And I think that there is, if, you know, market for that, or there is a market for that, those businesses will thrive with a different segment of the market. So I'll be voting yes for this.
Okay. No more comment. Thank you for coming up here tonight, and I will make the motion that we recommend to council ordinance 2024-081, conditional use for video gaming establishment in downtown mixed-use district at 140 West Wilson Street.
Second.
And roll call, please.
Raza?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
No.
Peeper?
No.
Malone?
Yes.
Sulfah?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Lehman? Ayazi? Malay?
No.
Uwe?
No.
Serone? And vocal singer? Six. Six or four.
Okay. Thank you. That'll go on to the council on positive recommendation.
Regular agenda, correct?
Yeah, regular agenda. All right, project status?
I have a very brief project status this evening. I'm sure everybody will be glad for that. Want to thank our friends at the Kane County Department of Transportation. They responded to our request to work with BNSF to smooth out that railroad crossing on Kirk Road. So people, and then BNS came back and fixed it, and sorry for those who liked it, like, you can no longer go airborne at the crossing. So that's, that's a very good thing. We're very happy about that. Also, we did a cut over to the online version of LAMA, which is our land management software, and that is the, you know, applications for building permits. It's our special events licenses. It's software that numerous departments throughout our organization use. We had training on it last week. It was a pretty quick rollout and move to the online system, so we're still adjusting to it, but we think that it will offer us the opportunity to work more efficiently with one another, and also the opportunity to get upgrades to that system instantaneously, you know, as they're rolled out. So that's very good. And then also, our Historic Preservation Commission approved the Certificate of Appropriateness to demolish the Tin Shop Building at 112 North River Street. So in January, we'll be bringing back a conversation to city council about how you would like to proceed in that regard, you know, possibilities of offering that in some way to an interested party who might be wanting to move that building, and/or if we can't find somebody who wants to move that building in whole, to use the materials, reuse the materials someplace, because there is a kind of a nice mural that's on the side of that building that perhaps somebody may want to use in their establishment. That's all that I have, unless anybody has any questions for me.
Any questions for? Okay. Does anybody have any others tonight?
Go ahead.
Sure.
With the cold weather that's going to be coming in here tomorrow, I just wanted to mention, if there's anybody that's actually still listening to this meeting, and to you guys that, you may have people that ask you, the Warming Center is going to be open tomorrow starting at three o'clock, anticipated to go through Friday around noon. So it's a place where people can come in if they need to warm up. We're not going to have cots or anything like that for people to lay their heads down, but definitely a place to come and warm up, so.
And where is that located?
Police lobby.
Okay, no others. Look for a motion to go into executive session for collective bargaining and personnel. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?